Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, April 11th, 2025, 5:30 PM. And I'll call to order the Board of Select Meeting. Today's meeting will be recorded and will be available on the Town's YouTube page. Currently present is Selectman Loebz, oh, sorry, Selectman Zager, Selectman and myself, Selectman Matthews. Selectman Loebz will be here. He's just running a few minutes late. We're going to kick off and go out of order and just get some of these agenda items cleared out. So we're going to start off with agenda item one, which is discussion of vote whether to approve the open session meeting minutes from March 24th, 2025. Any questions or concerns?
No, everything good, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 3/24/2025.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, should we jump down to agenda item six?
Yeah.
All right, this is discussion of vote on awarding the IT Support Services for 7-1, 2025 through 6/30, 2025?
2026.
2026, good catch. And what page is this one on? All right, so, I'll just find it, hold on.
From Metro Spec?
Metro Spec?
Yeah.
Which is our current vendor.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, it's $140 an hour?
Yep.
Any questions or concerns on that?
No, I mean, it looks like they're the only ones who responded and it's currently the same, so absolutely.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the IT Service Support Services for 7-1, 2025 through 6/30, 2026 to Metro Spec?
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then, agenda item seven, discussion of vote on awarding the ambulance billing services for 7-1, 2025 through 6/30, 2028. And I got it now. So it looks like we got three, well, we requested bids from three companies.
Yeah. Only got it back from two.
So we got it back from Coastal Medical Billings, which is a quote of 3% and Comstar Ambulance Billing Services, which is 3.5%. And that's their take on the overall. So it looks like Coastal Medical Billing, and that's who we currently have, right?
Yes.
Correct.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the ambulance billing services for 7-1, 2025 through 6/30, 2028 to Coastal Medical Billings.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
I think you can close the annual town meetings for submission number two. Let's just close them all.
Yeah, all right, so, agenda item two is close the annual special town meeting warrants for submissions effective 4/2, 2025? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that was when the articles were due from...
Okay, just making sure. All right, that sounds good. Any questions or concerns?
No.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the annual special town meeting warrants for submissions effective 4/2, 2025?
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
You can even do number five if you wanted to, because that was done in the executive session.
Yeah, okay. So agenda item five, discussion of vote whether approve the purchase and sales agreement for Assessor's Parcel 239-038 on Bullock Road and add it to the annual town meeting on 6/2, 2025 for resident approval. So this is a plot of land that we're hoping to utilize for some town buildings down the Any questions or concerns on that?
No, I mean, we've gone over it and I think it's the right step forward and now we let the townspeople decide.
Absolutely.
It'll be on the town meeting for funding. We're still doing engineering and there is still the option to terminate the PNS if the Selectmen feel like there's something on the land that doesn't lend itself to be, to spend the money or to build the buildings that we hope to build in the future.
Yeah, and just to be clear, conservation, environmental, every concern, trying to check off the box ahead of time. So, to your point is a great point that we were given the right to terminate at any point, so if this doesn't work out or it doesn't pass on meeting floor, then we move on.
Yep. This is essentially located building in the middle of town, or essentially located plot of land in the middle of town, so I think that makes the most sense. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase and sales agreement for Assessor's Parcel 239-038 on Bullock Road and add it to the annual town meeting on 6/2, 2025 for resident approval.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unfortunately, I didn't bring the audit with me. I just wanted, just to give it to you guys, I'm sure you got it in your packet as well, just so that you saw the audit. I thought Matt's going to be here tonight, so just that there was no material weaknesses, there were no concerns with the audit. The only concern that the auditors have is for us to try to get away from cash, specifically at the transfer station and even within, you know, the town hall. But usually the people that come and pay with tax, cash are those people who are, they're going to continue to pay with cash, right? Like, they don't want to pay with a credit card or pay with a card or a check. So we're cognitive of that. I am looking for something to do differently at the transfer station to get away from cash.
Venmo?
I was just about to say Venmo could be something.
Yeah, we have implemented Venmo, but we have implemented card machine up there now, so you can pay with a debit card or a cash card of sorts. So that's, has been implemented since last year. So we will continue to work on that, but I, you know, mostly wanted to, you know, recognize Matt and fortunately, he's probably going to come at 6 o'clock, but to say that, you know, we're lucky, we haven't had any issues with our audit and like I said, you see what, you have the letter that came from the auditors. So that's always good to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think at that point, you know, it's really, we're going to put a kink in some people, right, where that have always paid with cash, to your point, so I think we have to really try and identify if we can, you know, checks, credit card, debit card, Venmo, whatever it takes to be able to give these people every option beyond cash, because for obvious reasons, we probably shouldn't take cash over this, so.
It's just hard to get some of the certain people just away from the cash, right? But we, like I said, we're cognitive of it, we're working on it, we've made some steps and we'll continue to look on it, but that's really the only thing that identified as an issue within the town.
That's great.
Yeah.
Like I said, it was a little bit, so you, just so this left board knows and to give Matt recognition too, because he's really the one that's on top of that.
Amazing.
All right, so we're trying to delay here, waiting for Selectman Loebz before we jump into the special, annual special town meeting warrants for review. Do we want to just come into the... I guess we can start reading them.
Start with the special town meeting.
Figure that makes sense. All right, so, first article. See if the town will vote to appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of $175,000 for maintenance projects at the elementary school, including engineering, design, construction, and installation costs, and any other incidental related costs and expenses. Projects include, but are not limited to feasibility study, engineering for boiler, water filtration upgrades, and/or take any action relative thereto.
So as you know, we're responsible for the building, Free Town Elementary School building, and I've been working with Greg Goodwin and the Pensive Ward and Jack Higgins to go over some of the pressing needs. One of the pressing needs is a new boiler. So the first phase of that is having a feasibility study and getting the engineering down for the boiler, so, and then also, we need to do some upgrades to the filtration system. And there's other projects that are going to come up, so I worded this in a way that we can be flexible in how we spend this money, hopefully, but we need to start investing back into that building.
And so, so that was going to be my question, and I'm glad you said it, because so say all these projects end up costing us, I don't know, $125,000 or $50,000 left. Well, we know that that roof was something we've talked about as being concerned, that's going to be a much larger price tag. We'll have this worded so that we don't need to go back to town meeting for...
Yeah, that $50,000 can be spent towards a project at the school.
Yeah, which is great.
Only at the school, but...
Yeah, which is fine, because to your point, there's stuff that needs to be done there, so.
And just so you know, that'll be coming out of free cash.
All right, and then that reminds me about the elementary school, the backdoor issue, you know, as I've been, Cheryl brought it up to me, showed me it.
Yeah, I sent an email over to Greg Goodwin and the Jack Higgins at the school for them to address that, because we did pay for that to be handicap accessible.
Yeah.
So they should be working on that to get it repaired.
Okay.
I'll hold up with a more detailed information here email. I know Mr. Goodwin is not in at the moment, so I think John was going to look into it in the...
Okay, great, thanks Cheryl.
Thank you.
All right, next article, sorry, I think we're good for, at least us two, no problems with that one. All right, next article, reallocate funds for council on aging temporary office space to parking lot. So this is to see if the town will amend the vote taken under Article 7 of the June 2023 Special Town Meeting, which appropriates $300,000 for temporary office space, the pod, to reallocate and add month, well, add the month when we get it from Matt, add amount, sorry, for the design, engineering, increase size, reconstruction of Council on Aging Parking Lot located at 227 Chase Road, East Free Town, Mass, including any incidental related costs. So, so this is...
This is actually, I'm going to clean up the wording a little bit. This, and I have not talked to COA, this is an article that will reallocate some of the original funding that was put aside for them to build the addition. And now we reallocated, there was two articles for $550,000 each. We reallocated 300 of it for the temporary pod. We've spent that money on the pod and the vestibule that was installed. We need to do a complete revamp of the parking lot now, try to make it more handicap accessible. We need to make it larger. So I want to reallocate the remaining amount of one of the 550,000, so say there was roughly 250,000. I know we used some of it for engineering, so I'm going to say there was about $225,000 and that's what I've got to get from that. I want to reallocate that amount of money for the parking lot project, because we've got to dig up the whole entire parking lot, bring in some fill, build a retaining wall, and re-asphalt the parking lot. So it's a substantial amount of work, but I don't want to take more tax funds, I want to use the money that's already allocated for this, the COA. So I just have to correct some of the language in that article, but that's sort of a placeholder for it.
All right, makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me.
And I will confirm with the COA that they're okay with that reallocation.
All right. All right, next article here is funding the Free Town Elementary School Stabilization Fund.
So this one is, we have, this, this is the special town meeting, so there's some free cash. My goal is to spend the money in these articles for free cash and whatever's left over to put that in the stabilization fund. I think I'm estimating it about $500,000. So that'll sit in the stabilization fund for the Free Town Elementary School. Right now, we're estimating the boilers to cost a million dollars, and of course, we know we've got the roof on top of it. So we set up stabilization fund last year, we put the rents that we received from the school into that fund. Currently, there's $125,000-ish in that fund.
Was that about 60 grand a year?
It was 60, 75,000 now we get from rents. And so I'm going to try to put some money away so that when we have to come up with these, it won't be such a burden to the town, you know, we'll have some money set aside.
Okay, all right, thank you. Welcome, Selectman Loebz, you missed the first three articles, nothing too crazy, though. And we're starting off with the special town meeting. All right, so the next one, next article here is fund purchase of new salt shed at the Highway Barn. This is to see if the town will vote and raise appropriate and/or transfer from available funds $50,000 for design, engineering, and related services to initiate construction of a new salt shed for the Highway Department.
This came from the Highway Savannah, he feels like we need a new salt shed because ours is too small, and then he can't get salt in the middle of the winter, so he needs a larger shed in order to have more capacity.
Do we think $50,000 will cover that?
Well, that's for the, just for the engineering.
I was going to say, I was like, who's buying, I want one of these sheds.
I think he's estimating a million dollars for the salt shed.
Okay, initiate construction, that's an important word there.
Yeah, this is just for the design, and I actually put the $50,000 figure in because he didn't have one there, so I think that should be enough to get you some engineering and design for a building.
Okay, yeah, I was expecting like 600,000. All right, any questions or concerns there?
No.
All right. Next article, fund park repairs, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and/or transfer from available funds in sum of $100,000 to maintain and improve the parks throughout Free Town and/or take any action relative thereto.
So this is one we've been talking about, to have some money available to work on improvements to the, to the parks. I know we're working on getting an earmark to put electric at the town beach, but there's other things that need to be done in, throughout the, throughout the town at the parks, and this will give us the availability of funds to do those things as the year goes on.
And so, we don't have to put more details around that, we don't think, right now?
I can probably beef it up a little bit, just to say that, you know, any, I'll probably call it fund park repairs and improvements. I don't want it to be, again, too tight, because then we can only spend it for what it's specifically for, and if we, you know, we might decide to redo the basketball courts. If we don't get electricity, if we don't get an earmark from one of the representatives, then we probably want to put electricity down to the town beach, because then we can have events there, we can expand on that park and use it more. As it sits now without electricity, it's difficult to do anything down there.
Yep.
And we really want to try to start cleaning that up so that there's, you know, you can utilize it, it's a nice space, it's beautiful, that's a great resource that we have that we're not fully using, so we're trying to, trying to get it so that it can be used more. So, so, you know, I don't quite know yet until I get those earmarks in from the state reps, what we're going to be able to do.
My only, obviously, you know I'm all on board with this, my only question is, is do we have to put something, because, so what I, you know, we talked a little bit about in a couple of meetings ago was feasibility, right, of the area, right, and looking at Long Pond and seeing what makes the most sense. Do we put wording in there so that we know, you know, if we have to do like a feasibility study or, you know, just to make sure we lay the place out correctly, if there's some money that needs to be around that, that we can pull from here?
Okay, I'll add something that says, including, but not limited to feasibility studies in construction. I'll work on the wording, so that it's...
And that's not what I want to turn this $100,000 into, I just want it, you know, if we need to do something.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good place to start on both parks, too, we've talked about that.
All right, moving on, next article here, fund purchase of lawnmowers, so see if the town will raise appropriate funds for $14,455.35 to purchase a new John Deere Z960M Lawn Mower for the Highway Department.
This just came from Chuck, he needs it.
Yep, understood. Any questions or concerns?
No, no, they break.
All right, next one, wordy one, this is lease for Town Hall Annex. So this is to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate or transfer from available funds in sum of $18,400 to enter into a lease with lease, or leases with 69 South Main Street LLC to lease all or portion of the building located at 69 South Main Street, So formerly known as Patty's Hair Salon, to be utilized as annex for the Town Hall, such leasing to be undertaken in accordance with provisions of General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen determine to be the best interest of the town and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into such agreement and execute such instruments as may be necessary to effectuate the purpose of this article, and further to raise inappropriate the sum or transfer the available funds in the $18,400 for such lease, or leases, and take any action relative thereto. So this is just the annex that we've currently been using.
Yeah, it's just to, it's just to get the town approval to lease the building. We, we used upper funding in the past, so we haven't used tax dollars to lease it, so this is getting town approval to continue with that annex.
All right, and it's a three-year term for that, right?
Yes, I think that, I mean, you could, you could probably...
For $18,000 per year.
It's 18,000, it's 18,000, it's 1,500 a month, it'll go up $50 a year, so that's why I like the 18,400.
Okay.
And it'll go up $50 a year. Three-year term, I mean, we're, you know, we're stuck there.
Yep. All right, the next article is for the Free Town Elementary School Stabilization Fund.
I think I duplicated that.
I was going to say, I was like, that sounds real familiar.
Get rid of that one. The only difference was the funding, which we'll deal with.
Yep, all right, so that's all for the special, right?
Do you guys want to vote to approve those articles to go to Town Council for review and I'll make the, with the, with the changes that were suggested?
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to send the special town meeting warrants with the edits that we've spoken about tonight to Council for review.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, are we going to do the annual now, or should we, it's 6 o'clock, I think, should we start the...
I mean, we can, we can do it after.
All right.
I want to give the FinCom a minute to, or you want to give Carlos to do the personnel section?
Yeah, Carlos, that work, we'll take care of personnel and then we'll, then FinCom can open up their meeting?
Absolutely. All right, Personnel Board, I'm in agenda number eight, discussion and vote whether to approve the following appointments. A, Nancy Durfee, Serped Commission Member, effective 5/31/2025 through 6/1/2026. B, Donna Ashley, Agricultural Commission, Farm Owner/Employee, effective 4/14/2025 through 6/30/2026. And lastly, but not least, C, Craig Cabral, to Scholarship Committee, effective 4/14/2025 through 6/30/2025. Yeah, these are pretty straightforward, pretty much their duties, and the only really new one is Craig going to the Scholarship Committee, which is a great committee to have, right, giving away some, some money, some deserving students. Any comments, questions, concerns? Let's move forward, all right. I entertain the motion to, that being said, I entertain the motion to approve, I'm in agenda number eight, A, B, and C, the folks appointed thereto.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Give the FinCom a minute to come up.
Yeah, FinCom, do you guys, do you folks want to come around here, yeah? Do they have a quorum?
Yes.
Oh, great.
The hot seat.
I know. I'm happy I'm on this side of it.
Yeah, we don't mess around, we get you a name tag and everything, so they know who
I just cleaned it up.
Eventually get one of these, bite into it, the worst, that might add real gold.
Is there nothing on 196? All right, so, for those at home, it's 6 PM, so we're going to do the combined meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to review the 2026 budget. Tonight, we'll be going over fire, budget, town clerk, animal control officer, and Building Department will be on the hot seat, so it is 6 o'clock, so if you want to kick off your meeting, Mark.
Being 6 o'clock and having a quorum present, I will call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Real quick, we have, we need to reorganize our board. So I have been Chair of the Finance Committee, I would like to remain Chair. Does anyone else have an interest?
The only interest we have is that you remain Chair.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I would make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain. All right, I am Chair Vice Chair currently is Cara. I motion that Cara remain Vice Chair.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the only other one that we have to do is Regional Finance Committee Representative. Chris is interested and Cara is interested.
Thank God.
All the best, rock, paper, scissors, here it comes.
Two seconds, why would you like to be on the...
I spent a good deal of time in the past year going to the school committee meetings and have an interest in how our schools operate in the district, because I have schools in the district, and noting, knowing that we have some, some improvements that could be made there.
Okay, Cara.
I grew up in town, I've forever, besides a few years, been a resident of Free Town, including going through the school district myself. I spent a number of years working at the district as well, and I have maybe not been present at every single meeting, but I have watched every meeting the last few years. I do think that, you know, our schools do carry the majority of our tax liability for our residents, and I do think that there's a lot of need with the schools, but I also think we need to dovetail with the needs of the town.
I'm actually not sure. Do I do motions, do I do...
Yeah, I think...
You would have to have someone create a motion for one or the other.
Why don't you just have them flip a coin?
Is that your motion?
It's not a bad idea. I think they both seem to be, would be great at that role, so.
I know, I know. I'm actually going to motion that we put this off till our next meeting, so we can all think about it.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Why don't you appoint them both and have one go one time, no one the other?
Because we can't. We can't do that.
It's too bad you can alter back and forth. It's availability.
Well, you're going to have one vote, they're going to alternate.
So, the minute from 11:12:24 to 3:25, to 2:24:25 and 4:08:25, they've been distributed. Are there any discussion, anything that needs to be adjusted?
I make a motion excepting as written.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain. Awesome. Awesome, we're done with our housekeeping.
All right, great. All right, so, we're gonna start off, the first budget is one ninety-six in our book, it's D E P hazmat, and I don't think I see anything in our budget book for that.
I think that's been gone, right?
It's just, okay, so, well, we're gonna skip over that one, and next we'll be going over to two twenty, which is fire.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, should we come up with a game plan, actually, before we start this? Every year, I feel like we have this conversation, what's the most effective way to do this? I think if we take a few minutes, and each, everyone looks through it, and if we have any questions, we can direct those to the chief. If not, I don't think it's worth talking about every line item on the budget.
No.
We'll be here forever. So let's just take two minutes and just look through this, and does everyone cut through that?
The additional gross overtime, medical training, is that compulsory from the state?
A great deal of that is state requirement for the paramedic recertifications and the various, we have the number three twenty-four hours required by Sarah Title III PH employees. So a great deal of this mandated, Bob, and some of it is elective that we.
I mean, is this, this isn't done in-house, this is done?
Well, a lot of it's done in-house.
It's not covered anywhere else as far as the gross overtime, that's not covered in the additional gross overtime, one hundred and sixty-five thousand?
Okay, that, the one hundred and sixty-five thousand is strictly backfill for time off.
Turn it by me again, it's for what?
The one hundred and sixty-five thousand, that account is strictly to backfill people that are off.
Okay.
Vacation time, sick time.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's coverage?
That's, that is backfill coverage.
Okay, all right, okay.
And the medical training is just one of the firefighters that are due training?
That is all training, I don't know why it's worded like that, I don't like that word, but that's all of our training.
Okay, okay.
If somebody goes to the Fire Academy for a class, they're paid out of that. If somebody's on duty and needs to go to the Fire Academy for a class, and I backfill the covers, so I have my three people there, it's paid out of that, so that's.
Oh, okay.
If we're teaching a CPR class, and everybody's required to be there, they're paid out of that. We just had a program, we've been doing annually, actually, where my training lieutenant comes here and does a class for the dispatchers, actually does two, because they can't all be at the same class, so I would pay, I pay him to teach the program, so that comes out of there.
Okay.
That's all training, whether it's CPR, Advanced Cardiac Life Support, Fire Academy, monthly drills, all the training is in there.
So that pays the ones that are being trained and the ones that are covering for the ones that are leaving, gotcha.
So bear with me, what the, this account, Fire Education slash Career Incentive Stipend is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, is that concurrent with the Fire Additional Gross Overtime or the Fire Additional Gross Overtime Med Training? Are they, why are they separate?
Those are educational stipends they get annually for the paramedic recertifications, certifications for being firefighter one-two certified, fire officer certified, fire instructor certifications, that's all contractual.
Yeah, it's all part of the C P A, right?
All contractual incentives and stipends.
Okay.
The only, the other thing that's in there, and I put it in there because they just negotiated a reimbursement for E M Ts that go to paramedic school, and the last basic E M T that we hired full-time will be finished with paramedic school sometime this fall, so six thousand of that is, is monthly reimbursements for that program, should be certified by probably November, so.
So they have to be, E M Ts all have to be certified, correct? They all have to be certified, even you, right? Okay, and that's part of their job description?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I'm just, I'm just curious, you got a hundred and twenty thousand, then you got another a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and that's just based, I'm sorry, a hundred and eighty thousand, that's just for the certifications, that's to keep everybody up to speed as far as medical training?
Medical certifications, it's their fire certifications, it's all those, they get a stipend for the EMS training officer gets a five hundred dollar annual stipend, the grant writer gets a five hundred dollar stipend, it's all stuff that's in the contract.
Okay, so this is a yearly thing, it has to be done every year, everybody has to participate, okay.
One quick question, Chief. Are we, are you taking into account in the training budget for any additional training certifications required for the upcoming retirements? I know yourself and Deputy Chief are retiring, and you probably have to get some other folks up to speed.
So what we have done, what we're doing currently, and what we've always done in the past, is we're very conscious of succession plan. So, right now, do you understand, can I give a little, there's a few new faces here, do you understand how our staffing and how we work over there at the fire station?
Not entirely.
Okay, so I, we have three firefighter, paramedic, and E M Ts, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, there's four groups of three. During the day, Monday to Thursday, the Deputy Chief works days, he does primarily fire preventions, inspections, he's reviewing plans, it's all the fire prevention stuff he does, and that's, that's a lot of work. And then also, Tuesdays to Fridays, I have a career lieutenant who's part of our succession plan, we just, he's been here for twenty years, he's moved, let's see, it was last July, we hired one person, full-time, I put that person on the rotation, and we moved the lieutenant to days. So we're teaching him all the internal things, right, this budget. Come in here, look at this, this is how I do this. So all of the internal stuff, we're, we're doing on a daily basis. Operationally, same thing. Now, as far as classes go, unfortunately, I took the chief fire officer classes, I don't know, it was my, my first fall as chief, those are competitive, so they want to see you have a title of Deputy Chief or Chief to be able to get into them, they're very competitive, so I actually had to be a chief before I could get into that, there's like thirty seats in that, and they only hold it once a year. So he will have that opportunity once, once he has the gold badge and not the silver badge, but, so there's, there's not really, there is elective money in there for Fire Academy programs. I'll give you an example, recently, that were familiar with Critical Incident Stress Management, the Bristol County Critical Incident Stress Management Team, most of the members are, for lack of a better term, I'll say, I'm old, they're getting old. So my, my father-in-law was one of the founding fathers of that, he's been retired for eighteen years. So I recently had two of our full-time members come and express interest in that, it was a three-day seminar, and they said, Chief, we'd like to go take this, to be involved in this, and that's, that's a noble thing, that's not an easy thing to, to deal with. So fortunately, I go and I look and say, yeah, I have some money left in seminars, we can pay for the room for you guys to go, and was able to compensate them for the hours they were actually in the class, so there is some elective money in there, now when that's gone, the next guy that comes to me and says, hey, I want to, I want to go take the fire officer program at the academy for twenty-four hours, say, hey, you're more than welcome to, but I don't have the money this year. If you want to wait till after July, we'll put you on the top of this for that.
So you're thinking the additional fire chief training would be, we'd have to budget for, for, once, once he's in office?
The Fire Academy's free.
Yeah.
For, for communities in the Commonwealth, and that was all, I mean, that was all on duty, I did the homework at night after hours, so there's really no cost for those type of things.
Excellent, thank you.
You bet.
So I just want to say one thing, so Matt and I have been working on this budget, the budget is put together, we are, we are able to fund it with the budgets that you have in front of you, so just so you know that these are fundable, we talked about sustainability of the budget, that should, I believe that that will be, even though I'm projecting BP to be almost double next year, I think that we will be okay with that as long as I pull back on the capital, which I have told all of the department heads for the last few years, to get your capital needs met, because we're gonna get really tight and you're not gonna be able to get them. So everybody's in a good shape, this is, the Fire Department is the one that is asking for new staff, so there are two new firefighters in this budget, so at that, it is, it is, we are able to fund it, and it is sustainable, so I just want you to be aware of that, that that's there. But one of, one of the, I was reluctant, you know, when I'm trying to look at the big picture, but one of the thoughts was, if it, if something should change drastically, and it's not, because we have two retirements coming up, I would be able to not fill those positions moving forward without a big, without having to lay somebody off or fire somebody, so I thought, well, I've got, I've got some protection for the town in that moving forward, because we know we have two planned retirements. So I just wanted to kind of preface that.
Through attrition, we should probably be at a similar place we're at.
We will be through attrition, I, I know that, I mean, our, the opposite concern, and the chief will talk to this, is with the MBTA station and what we get going on in the call, and you can talk more about the call volume, because I know you're prepared to do that, for the need of these extra firefighters, but as a budget, when I'm projecting for the town and looking at things, you know, I'm always worried about sustainability, we might be able to do it this year, but what about next year? I think, based on what I'm projecting, which is a two million dollar increase to the school budgets, we will still be okay, sustainability, you never know, but through, through some work, I think we're okay. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, so you all know that we're, we're funded, we can fund this budget as it's presented, and there isn't going to be any shortfall, just so you're, you're looking at it with that eye as you look through these numbers from departments.
Thanks. Yeah, and I think we'll be able to, sorry, I think we'll be able to determine better, at least the start of the impact on the MBTA to us, and then it might mean that we only keep one firefighter or both, or we might, you know, so I think that this is the right plan to get us where we need to be.
Chief, I was gonna ask, when you do speak about personnel, could you talk about how it ties into overtime and if there's any savings?
Well, sure. Okay, so I just, I just laid out the groundwork of what our current staffing looks like, so now, those three people that are always there, I'll give you an example, a medical call comes in, eighty-five, ninety percent of what we do is EMS, right, medical call comes in, two of them leave in the ambulance, generally, the officer in charge leaves in the pickup truck, goes with them, they start the, they start the patient care, they say, okay, yep, we're all set, Lieutenant, and the ambulance goes off to the hospital, the lieutenant returns to the station. Now we have somebody in the building, majority of the time, we have somebody in the building, it's a paramedic that can get the next, the ambulance on the air for the next call. The, so the caveat to that is occasionally, we say, I wish Katie was here, because I have an interesting story for her, but occasionally, okay, this is, we gotta have two people in the back of the truck for this, if it's a cardiac arrest, sometimes we need three people in the back of the truck, we have to call back out. Okay, this is a serious call, we need to take two paramedics and a driver. I tone out, I call back. If the, I call back and I get two, make that clear, I tone out for two people to come in for coverage, they go on the app on their phone, they click available, dispatcher goes down through the list in their book, says, okay, yeah, the, the next two people on the list is Bill and George, they announce on the radio, Bill and George have ambulance coverage, they come from home, they pick the ambulance up, they go get the pickup truck off the side of the road, now they're covering the town for the next call until the ambulance clears. Okay, next scenario, they get to the call, majority of the time, we transmit our EMS slip, the trip sheet, if you will, electronically, so they type it all on a laptop, and as soon as it's done, when they hit print, it simultaneously sends it to the ER via fax. So the turnaround time at the ER should be relatively quick, so that truck's back in town, back in service, ready to provide, you know, care for the next call. If they use medication, now they have to go to the pharmacy at the hospital, which means they have to get their paperwork done, signed by the physician before they can leave the hospital, so that creates a delay, sometimes it's an hour. So what will happen if they use the medication, they'll call back to the lieutenant and say, hey, we're using medication on this call, that we have to get replaced, especially the narcotics, and lieutenant will have the dispatcher, again, they'll tone out, they get one person to come in and cover. So that, that's a system that we've been using, for the most part, it works, except, we've, I've only been really tracking this since July first, because it happens more and more and more often, and I'm scratching my head, you know, boy, we need to, we need to go back and go back to July, and the lieutenant in the back of the room there has been helping me, and he sits there, and he counts through sheets and sheets of paper. You cannot believe how often the second medical call comes in now while the first truck's working, and a hundred and fifty times, we've had to, we've had to have the second truck go out on the road while the first truck's tied up, and it, I, I can't explain it, it's a phenomenon, it just, it doesn't make any sense, but it keeps happening. It happened, it happened Thursday, and that was the, Katie sent me the, the update from the cath lab at Charlton, we had, we had the first truck, it was a shift change, like ten minutes of age, so it worked out perfectly, but the first crew went out to East Free Town for a call within, I don't know, they weren't there yet, it was three or four minutes, we had a heart attack come in in a sonnet, and it was, it was serious. And I get a follow-up from Charlton for all the cardiac calls, I get follow-ups from St. Luke's for all the trauma calls, they, they give you these follow-ups, just so your crews can know, hey, yeah, this is, this is how this went, and that individual got a very positive outcome because of how quickly he made it to the cath lab, and there was, there was kudos to the crew and all that in the, in the letter, which was very nice, but, so that, that was fortunate. If it had been ten o'clock in the morning, and the calls in Heaven Heights on Long Pond, and the heart, heart attack comes, and it's in a sonnet, now, if the deputy's in the building, or I'm in the building, obviously, we're gonna get in the ambulance, we're gonna take the ambulance, we're gonna go get started, but, so that's, that's where we're at, that's, so that's what's been happening.
It's an interesting trend, though.
It, it is, and it's not unique to Free Town.
Yeah.
You know, I ask around, and Lakeville's the same way, and Berkeley's the same way, you can have a lull for four or five hours, and then the first call comes in, and the second one comes in, it's just, it's crazy how that works. So some of, some of you are here in twenty twenty-three, when, when I made this, my first talk on staffing and budgets, and does everybody have the recent staffing study that I did that has all the semisized communities? I don't know if, I don't know if I had that when I gave the original packet, this was, this was compiled by Hugh O'Brien in Lakeville, and it did this January first at twenty-five, I don't think I had. And it did this January 1st at 25. I don't think I had, I don't think I had the results yet, Deb.
I don't think I have it.
It's got, so, so what, what I did is they, we got replies from just about every department in the state. So, I went through and, and kind of pulled out combination on-call and full-time fire departments. And I tried to focus on the departments to do fire and EMS, just where, where kind of comparable. And there's, it's broken down by population and how many full-time people they have per group. And I won't, I won't read the whole thing to you. I, in fact, I'll copy this and I'll, I'll email it to you.
Okay. And I'll forward it. Yep.
I'll cut halfway down the list here. West Bridgewater has a population of 8,000 people. They have five people on a group. The Hasset has 8,300 population, four people on a group. Georgetown, 8,500 population, five people on a group. Air is the same. Westminster has 8,600, four people on a group. Deb's favorite, Southborough, 10,400 population, they have five people per group. So, it, so I, I think what happened, and I know, I look at my budget and I've been here for, I don't know, 41 years, but I look at my budget and I go, wow, that's, that's a big number. And then Debbie and I have conversations about, well, the increases since 2021 or 2022. And I scratch my head and I go, wow, she's right, yeah, okay. I get back and I sit down and I look. And in 2000, we built the central fire station. We hired three people, three additional people full-time, and we had two people at the station 24 hours a day. Fast forward to 2017, that was the next time we added an additional person. We added one person on the daytime. That was the deputy's position for days. That was the fire prevention slot that Gary had established. In 2019, we were able to get two people on a safe, a federal safer grant to daytime 40-hour people. Those didn't come into, we weren't paying the full cost of those people until 2022. And then since then, I've been progressively trying to get to four rather than, I, I know, we, we agreed when we first talked about this, and I, and I came with all my statistics that we couldn't, we can't chew this all off in one big lump and hire six people at a time. We needed to, we needed to increment and increase it. So, that's, that's what I've been trying to do. I, I know my budget's grown a lot. And I, I sympathize with that because I know, I, I live here as well. I, I've been here when we all fought over the same dollar on town meeting floor. I, I get it. But on the other hand, I have to, I have to at least present to you what, what we're dealing with on the fireside and the trends that we're seeing. And you have, like, the, the training money, right? You have a really, really talented group of individuals over there. You have probably some of the best paramedic, not probably, you have the best paramedics in the region. You have some of the best trained firefighters in the region, and there's a reason for that. There's a reason people wanna come here and work for us. And that's worth something. I'll talk to the, I mean, the, the train thing, I think that's, that is what it is. It's been.
Are you seeing any additionals yet with the train or additional calls?
Uh, we, I haven't seen it yet. I mean, naturally, we see on social media, there's been a pulse call with school buses and there's a lot of complaining and I did, I attended three different MBTA keolar safety incident evacuation exercises. And with a simulated train accident, they have somewhere around 100 people on the train that need to be evacuated. There are various levels of injury from death to wheelchair-bound individuals to walking wounded. The first one I went to, I went strictly as an observer. And I, it was in Braintree and I scratched my head and I went, holy cow, we are not prepared for this. The sec, so I came back and with the help of some of my associates at work, we sat down. We started developing SOPs and getting a game plan together. And then the second exercise was here in, in Freetown. It was hosted in the sonnet. And they, there was discussions on what my role was gonna be there. And at the end, I decided I had to be the incident commander on that. I couldn't, I couldn't, with a clear conscience, put one of my, one of my officers, I couldn't thrust him into that position. So, I took the incident commander role on that. And I learned even more. I, I learned that we had a pretty good, a pretty good handle on a lot of things. And there were some things where it was shortfalls for a while. And so, we went back, more homework, more SOP changes, more equipment needs. We need, we need to figure this out, okay? Because I, I would go poll other communities to have the, the train. And they're like, oh, yeah, we don't have any with, any issues with MBTA. I mean, we have suicides, but, you know, a couple of those a year. And people jump on the tracks to commit suicide now. Like, okay, you don't have any problem with grain crossings and, oh, we don't have any. So, so it's not that poll, right? Nobody has, we have 11 plus.
I was gonna say, we have a lot.
We have 11 plus the one at, at Brighton-Sarno that's not really public, but it's still crossing. I'm like, oh. So, now I'm trying to get SOPs and it's, it's just, it was, nobody's in the situation that we're in. The third exercise I attended, they said, okay, you've done enough of that. You're gonna be an evaluator. So, that was in the city of Effort and I served in the evaluator. I came away with a little more information. So, at this point, we've bought the equipment. Some of it we've got from the MBTA. We have our plans all in place. Our people are trained. We're ready. I think we're gonna rely heavily on mutual aid. The, the county chiefs have a, a pretty aggressive stance on this as well. We have task force that we, we've put together. So, there's, there's, if it's the big and bad one, we're, we're gonna have help come from a lot, a lot of different places around. So, again, we haven't had the, we haven't had the accidents at the grade crossings. We haven't had those things yet. It's a matter of time. It's gonna happen. I don't know how often it's gonna happen. I think the bigger impact is, and I've checked a couple of times when I'm in the neighborhood of South Main Street. Right now, there's eight, 10 cars in the parking lot down there on, on a given day. I mean, there's a lot on, on the first day, but it's not being used quite to its potential yet. But I think as people figure it out, they, okay, well, I can go to Far River and there's no place to park or I can just go up the road to Freetown. You're, you're gonna have that impact of the housing, even if it's 3A or not, that you're gonna have a housing impact. You're gonna have the traffic impact of people running into D and D in the morning, a gas for their car, or the last-minute stop at the convenience store for their snack for the ride. You're gonna have that. And, I lost it. Oh, the ridership on the train, apparently from what I've gathered, sooner or later, you're gonna have a homeless encampment. It's, it's like everybody with a train station has a homeless encampment. And with that comes, those people are homeless. They don't have transportation. The police end up dealing with the law enforcement aspect of it. But EMS ends up with, they don't have healthcare, so all they're, everything, they wanna go to the emergency room for everything. And so, that's, that's gonna be impactful. And again, I haven't, it's been a month, I don't know, almost a month. And we haven't, we haven't seen those yet. But you, you look around and I don't know if it's because it's focused on now that we have the South Coast rail running, but it seems like there's incidents all over the place. Abingdon had a couple. They just had a train crash. Trail of Canton. And it's like, you didn't hear about any of this two months ago. But I don't know if that's just because it's on the radar now, but so that's, that's where we are with that. I anticipate that that is going to impact us greater in the future. So far, that's been okay. I, I will say, when you talk to the, about the grade crossings, there's, the, the trips are a little more frequent than what I anticipated, what we were told in the beginning.
Yeah, 70 minutes, 70 minutes or so, really 68, depending where you live.
That, that, is that weekdays or weekends, Carlos?
Weekdays. I'll wait till two, 1:40 in the morning is the last train that goes by.
Yeah, wow, great.
It's fantastic.
Right. So, I mean, just with that ungodly 11 grade crossings, I mean, that, I don't know, it's 300 times a day that the trains cross on the street in Freetown. It's like absurd. When I, when I go to meetings and people talk about, oh, the MBTA in South Coast. And they go, oh, yeah, well, we get those two grade crossings. I'm like, I have 11. What? Yeah, so.
It sounds like you did a great job getting your team ready for it, though.
I've taken it seriously because it scared me.
Yep.
It scared me. And I, I mean, I, I don't. I feel like we've done all we can do. Now, now it's wait and see. And I'm not gonna say the first incident, we say, oh, jeez, we weren't ready for that. We didn't calculate that. But I, I think, I, I think we're, I think we're prepared for that. Other than as things happen, it, it's gonna get busier.
May I ask, were there any capital requests?
Yes.
In relation to the MBTA?
Yes, they're all, there's none this year.
Okay.
I have no capital requests this year. Deb discussed earlier. We, we have a, the new squad for the, the duty officers just about ready to be delivered. I dropped the radios off Friday for that. That was two years ago, capital. And we have an ambulance that's pending that's two years away. But that's, we did have capital for some extrication equipments and airbags that were 40 years old and outdated and whatnot, but that's all been, we haven't take, we don't have delivery in a, of it all yet, but.
Sure.
That's all been.
All paid for.
That's all been accounted for.
But yeah, last year, there was a couple of things you came in for talking about where, you know, if it happens at a grade crossing, it doesn't stay at a grade crossing. It goes, you know, half a mile into the woods. So, they were looking at different equipment for it at that point, so.
I mean, basically, with the access for all of that is the UTV side-by-sides. And we, we have SOPs for that. That's all been training and mutual aid agreements and to get multiple of them here. And it's been, it's been quite an undertaking, but it's been interesting. It's been interesting. One thing that I, I wanted to touch on, and I, I don't know that, the, the board's probably away. I'm not sure that the FinCon is, but our community programs, I, I have a little bit of extra money. I added in, I actually doubled our other supplies line from 2,000 to 4,000 dollars. And previously, that was bottled water and those type of things, just in other. Our community programs range from the safe program we do in the schools during fire prevention week. We have a senior safe program where we go out and we do smoking carbon monoxide detectors, the, the blue address signs. We just started a new one with a joint program with the Council on Aging where we're, we'll go out and we'll do a safety inspection of the residents for the seniors. And we also provide them with a, a lock box with a house key on it. So, in the event that there's, there's an emergency call, we can use our code to get in that box and open their door if they can't get to the door. This is all, in, in the past, this has all been supported by grant money and donations. The Fire Fighters Association's been very, very supportive of this program, especially in the last year. We've probably spent 2,500 dollars worth of fire associations' donation money. When they do their fundraisers at 4th of July and whatnot. I mean, it's a, a combination carbon and CO detector now is over 50 dollars. You know, so if you're going to someone's house and they need three or four of them, depending on the layout of the house, that all adds up. So, the problem is the, the grant money has not, the grant money has not increased. The grand, the, the demand for the programs and the, the cost of all of these things has increased. So, I'm trying to help supplement that a little bit. I had one of our coordinators just give me a rough idea of how many hours we spend with that. And outside of the guys that are on duty, if we need to go put smoke detectors up in the middle of the day, the, the duty guy would run out with his step ladder and there's the wall drill. When we do the fire prevention stuff at the school, the, the duty crew goes. But we also have off-duty help because have to come in and do that because it's just, they're in five or six classrooms. There's three people there. Then we have a call and another call. So, it just, so some of it that we are compensating the personnel for. There is a lot of stuff that they do on their own for volunteer work. But there's a couple hundred hours of, of work that's outside of the on-duty stuff annually that we're, we're doing. And again, we, we need to, we need to compensate our people for, for a lot of that. So, that's, some of that is in that, that other line, the supplies other, just to help out. And I, I'm sure the fire association will continue to help out with the donations and the fundraisers. And that's, that's why they do it, right? They're not doing it to take themselves to a baseball game. It all goes back into the community at some point, whether they're buying equipment or whatever. But that's, that's something we're doing. It's become very popular. And it's definitely a good thing that the senior, the senior programs are, are really great because it's just to help keep them safe because they're not, they're not gonna go up and change a battery when the thing dips. They're gonna have somebody take it down and it's gonna go in a drawer and it.
Yeah.
So, it, it's something that we, we actually enjoy doing it, but it, it's necessary and it's, it's a good thing.
So, any other questions on the chief's budget? Just.
I got a, I got one for you. All right. So, I'm gonna preface this by saying, I, my, my question, I hope it never comes to fruition. And then I'm gonna ask probably every department this question. Earlier, we talked about sustainability, right? We also hear things on the news from the state trying to increase taxes, from the federal government reducing money coming into the school systems, to different programs in town. It could be a scenario that we come back out to you tomorrow, the next day, next year and say, hey, we can't afford this, right? That's a real, that's a real scenario. We, we haven't discussed that, but it's something that might come up. You're a man that likes to plan, all right? I, I, working with you over the years, I know you do. You have your SOPs. If the town comes to you and say, hey, we gotta do across-the-board cuts at every department, how would you, how would you go about that? I know it's a tough question, put you on the spot, but it's a real world scenario.
Carlos, it is, I guess, as well as I know you, the first question I'd say, Carlos, which emergency store you want me to go to?
No, I, I wouldn't have an answer for you. No, I.
Again, I'm not, sure. Yeah, I, I guess I'd have to, I'd have to sit down and, and look at that and say, okay, what are, what are the things, what are the things that aren't mandated that we can get by without? We can't, we, we have to do the calls.
Right.
Right? We have to do the calls. We have to meet the mandatory training requirements. Whether some of the elective things we could come back on, I, I guess that's a, it would break my heart to do that because that's, that's a perk of, of being here, right? You can't, you can't train enough for the job that can kill you.
Right. That's why I prefaced it by saying, never want that to happen.
I mean, it's, it's like, all, all those, all those little things add up to make that big number.
Yeah.
Right? The, the medical supply number keeps, we have to keep creeping up. But every year, they hit us with something new. Now, now we have to have, and it's not a lot of money to come on, but, but now we have to have a lab license to check blood sugars required by OMS. What? They, they come, they, they come and do the ambulance inspection and he takes the bat, the cardiac monitor battery that's like 500 bucks to replace it. And it's, it's gone, it goes on a high-tech charger. And it's, it's gone, it goes on a high-tech charger that tests it every annually and, tests it. Every time you charge it, it tests it. Oh, yeah, still test good. And the guy says, I don't know, this is over five years old, this is expired, you have to replace it. But wait, there's nothing wrong with it. Yeah, but it's over five years old, can't be on your ambulance. So all, all these things are just like technology, vehicle repairs. I, I'm going to be, I'm going to be back for a transfer again. I'm, I'm more than double what my vehicle repair line is right now. I'm twenty-two thousand dollars over on my vehicle repairs and I, I can't.
You guys are busy.
Hot, hot, right. The, the call pay line that I, for, for the callback, I'm, I'm in the hole on that right now. And we haven't, I can't remember the last time we were in the negative on call pay. But we had a busy brush fire season last fall. We had a busy brush fire season this spring. We got a hundred and fifty second medical calls. It's just busy. It's busy. And I, I know exactly what you asked me and I, I guess if that time comes, we'll have to figure it out. We will figure it out.
Yeah, no, but that's, that's the answer. We will figure it out. It's just something to keep in the back of our heads is, we don't know either, right? Sometimes we will get some information that we'll have to share with the community and that might change a few things.
Yep.
So things to keep an eye on.
So your thought is to kind of stack rank anything that's not a bare necessity to, to be, be able to make those decisions if it were to come to that?
Yeah, fortunately, yes. It's, you know, we have a lot of great things going for us. And like we discussed earlier, we can sustain it this year. And, but there's always an uncertainty that comes up, especially as you hear things. And I'd rather be prepared for the worst and, and, you know, and pray for the best. But at the same time, like you, I'm a, I like to have it down on paper. And each having a conversation keeps us prepared, right? So again, I'm, I'm prefacing it again, I'm, I hope it never comes to fruition. I'm probably going to ask every department that, start thinking about it in the event that we may have to have a serious conversation someday.
I think it's tough to, to come up with an answer to that when you don't know what it is. What does it mean percentage wise, dollar wise that you need, do you need them to cut back? Ten thousand dollars, well, it's a lot easier than, you know.
So guys, so we're forty-five minutes in on the first line item. So Bob, Bob, you want to go? I know you've been waiting for a while, so then we'll just keep it moving after that.
I only have one question.
Okay.
How much money did the fire department put back into the coffers of the town?
I have that number, Bob, because I knew you were going to ask me. Okay, total for FY twenty-four, I have six twenty-five, seven thirty-three, six hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-three. And the additional money from the Medicare cost reporting is a hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. I don't believe we've got that money yet, but it's, it's been approved and allocated. I don't, I don't think they sent us that in June, to like June. So the total would be seven forty, zero eighty-nine.
It's a good thing to keep track of the fact that the fire department does turn back that money into the town. It's a substantial amount of money that's coming back to us.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, great. So, so move on to the.
Sorry, just got one final question. You said earlier that you didn't have a capital request, but I do see one at the end related to engine three. So you wanted to refurbish engine three?
I, I, again, that hasn't been submitted. I, I talked to Debbie about that. I need to get some quotes on that and to, to look at that. That truck is, it's a thirteen, it's twelve years old. Its life expectancy should be twenty-five years and it's been riddled with problems. So I, I've talked to the dealer, I've talked to them, some other manufacturers and some diesel truck people. And the biggest problem is the power train in that was a Maxx Force engine. And I should have been, it should have inspected the commons engine. So there's, there's been some talk, I mean, to replace that engine today is a million bucks. We can probably refurbish it for two fifty to three hundred thousand with a new engine, go through the drive line, a paint job on it, make it look like it's new and get another fifteen years out of it versus.
Do we know if a new engine will actually fit in that thing?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. They, they, I've, I've done the prelimin, I don't have the, I don't have the hard numbers yet. It's probably something that I'll, I'll get all those quotes together and come back in the fall and look for.
Okay, all right, so we don't need to, we don't need to worry about it now.
At the moment, it's running.
Well, you know, I just wonder like, okay, you do that and then like what parts aren't being replaced? And at what point is it difficult to get those?
About that, that refurb, which they, they can do that in like six months. Takes you three years to get a new fire truck right now. So that's, that's another thing.
All right.
Yeah. We'll visit that in the fall.
Yeah.
So the next, next line item is two ninety-one civil defense, looks like it's flat.
The only, the only thing is that two and a half percent color for the salary.
Okay, any questions on that one? All right, perfect. So now we'll move to communications, which is two fifteen. You're going to do communications?
No, usually the fire, the police chief does it.
Police chief, okay.
We'll do that the next time.
All right, thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief.
All right, Cheryl, you're on the hot seat.
Thank you.
Yep.
The one sixty-one for town clerk?
Thank you.
Uh, one sixty-one.
Thank you, Cheryl. All right, let's do the same thing, let's just take a quick look through, see, and then.
So I have three budgets, one sixty-one, one sixty-two, one sixty-three?
Yep, we'll start with one sixty-one. Does that make sense in, in order? Or do you want to start somewhere else?
Whatever pleases the board, but I think the other two apart would be easier and quicker because there's reductions on those two.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for you, but you may have questions on one sixty-one, if any.
Do I not have one sixty-two?
Reductions on one sixty-two and one sixty-three.
Sixty-two is a reduction.
That wasn't mine. No, I am, I'm back.
Did you find it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I think we should all, we should just look through all of them real quick, right? One sixty-one, one sixty-two, one sixty-three, and then ask any questions about.
One sixty-one, one sixty-two, and one sixty-five.
Yeah, decreases.
Elections.
Okay.
I mean, what's to look at in elections?
Not much.
Yeah, and it's, it's good, right? Salaries.
Well, there was a savings of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars on the election, one sixty-two budget.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
A savings of two thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars on registrars because I took on some of that work. So that's why I was saying maybe one sixty-one might be the one you may have a question or not.
I don't really have any questions to speak, to be honest. Everything seems pretty flat or reduction. Obviously, you're right, those one sixty-two, one sixty-three are significantly reduced. So I'm not sure if anyone else has any questions.
No questions, just a comment. I like the way you laid it out. It's really nice, the personnel part, where you can just kind of see each person and how much they make and the difference, just makes it really easy for us to read.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Could you comment on the town clerk assistant gross overtime being reduced?
So the assistant, so the assistant in the office also takes on additional duties with me when it comes to elections, but they're paid out of the town clerk budget. So whenever the election budget reduces, then obviously any potential overtime may get reduced.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're welcome. So we, we were requested to level fund. So I think I've, I've gone below that without sacrificing level services and just providing the level services, if not above and beyond, for our town residents at minimal cost.
Let me just use that.
No, I, I'll be honest with you, Cheryl, I was going to ask you the same question I was going to ask the chief. You know, if we have to start thinking about cutting things and I looked at yours, I'm going, you've done a really good job of keeping things low.
Thank you.
There's always, we can always chop, 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 but that's not what we're here for, right? We're here to kind of look at it and see where you need and what you, what you need versus what you want. And you've done a good job, I'll give you that. We've reduced it.
If I could possibly answer that question, you know, no one can tell what the future holds and what we would be able or have to cut with our department, with my department, it works a little different. So I have four hundred and fifty-one mass general laws and statutes that are specific to the town clerk and/or elections. So it's all statutorily required. So it would be very difficult, you know, in worst case scenario, what do we do? We reduce trainings, which could potentially put us in liability so that we're not up to date with the current laws and education from the state. Or we close our window and we're doing everything online and via phone. And we all know what happens with that. We've all experienced in that through COVID. So this, this.
As an elected official, if you need us to sacrifice us taking the training every year to reduce any funding from your end, please let us know. I'm, I'm sure we can get more people involved as far as, we'll just skip it for a year.
Pull, yeah, pull it together.
If we need to.
Pull it together, that's what we do.
Just in case, the sacrifices we make is together.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot of this has gone down because we didn't have as many elections, right?
Well, the election budget goes down because that's, you know, FY twenty-six, we've only got the one annual town election. And then FY twenty-seven, we'll have two because it'll catch the March primary and then it'll catch the April election. So we're, we're, we'll be reducing or be level funded for the next two fiscal years.
Budgets reflect how many elections there are.
Yeah.
So they go up and down based on that, so that's why you're down.
Specifically, the elections budget. And then obviously, it will affect the town clerk budget, but mostly everything for town clerk is.
Elections and the registrars, but that goes down because of that.
Correct.
All right. Any questions, any other questions? Bob?
I don't know. They recommended, who's?
So that's my, you know, I sit with everybody, you know, I sit with every department head and go through their budget, me and, me and Margaret, the chair of the FinCon, and we go through with that. One of the things is, you know, all the department heads have come in and asked for substantial increases in their pay and, you know, based on what's going on and surrounding towns and what other people are making, they have come up with their proposals. And I, of course, working with both the personnel chair and the FinCon chair, we kind of come up with a baseline number. And this one exceeded that number and that's why I, I write what I recommend. But Cheryl, being an elected official, she has the right to ask for what she wants at town meeting floor for a salary. So this one was six point seven five percent increase, Cheryl?
Yep, it's six point seven five percent. But I also wanted to point out that, as usual, I come prepared with my, with my hard facts. And I did provide Margaret and Deb with the salary study for the areas surrounding towns.
It's in here, so you know.
Okay, it's in there? Okay, so you can see it's pretty much self-explanatory. So overall, for the town clerk budget, it's an increase of one thousand, five hundred dollars for the year, fifteen forty-six seventy-nine for the overall budget. But I did discuss with them, you know, compared to the surrounding towns and what certifications that the surrounding towns hold, the years that they've been elected or most of them are pretty new, twenty-two, twenty-three. I have three that were elected in twenty twenty-four that are making substantially more than what I'm making. I just, I wanted to stress the value that I bring and, and the, and the continued effort to serve the town and not just town officials, but the, the residents of Freetown. So I do, that is included in your budget packet, if you wanted to take a look at that. I also wanted to point out that I'm not eligible for or I don't have the opportunity to take advantage of the longevity stipend. And I've been with the town for twelve years and I have not ever taken the town's health insurance, which is also a huge savings for the town.
And so if I'm looking at this right, Cheryl, so the average is eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty?
Yes, and twenty-three cents.
For all, for these.
Yeah, for the thirteen that, yeah. And those are all surrounding towns, all elected officials.
Yep, okay.
So my request would be below that, actually, it would be seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Okay.
So when you're comparisons from town to town, are you comparing strictly apples to apples? The towns all have the same basic population?
So.
Requirements for the towns, which are all exactly the same?
When you say apples to apples, every town is different. I, I surveyed the surrounding towns that we normally compare ourselves to in other avenues. I can tell you based on population, we've got Lakeville, Avon, Acushnet, West Bridgewater. Those are all pretty close in regards to population and voter counts. Somerset and Swansea, obviously, they're elected officials, they're towns, but they have a little bit more of a increased population. So I don't think anything's apples for apples. I like to compare myself to, or compare our town to Dayton Mohibah because I think we are very similar in regards to population, in regards to a combined school district, voter count responsibilities. I can tell you with Dayton, she was elected in twenty twenty-two. She holds no certifications. I hold an international certification as well. I was just passed my state certification in March. And I'm currently working on my master's certification. And she is approximately two thousand dollars more than I am. So if you want a true comparison, one for one, I would suggest looking at Dayton Mohibah. That's the, that's the most, the closest to us. There's a lot of different variables.
Each town is different, though. I mean, each town is independent.
Correct.
Is each, does each town have an elected town clerk?
So there's three hundred and fifty-one communities in the state of Massachusetts. Some towns are elected, some towns are appointed. Here in your spreadsheet that I provided, those are all similar communities near us that are all elected. So on that basis, yes, comparing apples to apples. I figured appointed, it's a little different. You have, you know, you have the ability to jump from town to town. I didn't think it was right to include those. And normally with appointed town clerks, they're fighting for contracts. So those tend to be a lot higher salaries because you have the opportunity to jump from town to town.
I would assume comes with more responsibilities.
We all have the same responsibilities. There's four hundred and fifty-one general laws that we're all required to do and, and to, that we're held accountable for. So some towns may have, you know, like a webmaster or something like that. But pretty much, we're all the same duties. With an appointed town clerk, you know, it's contract negotiations and they're going to go where it's best feasible for them. I think as an elected town clerk, your, your heart is in the community that you serve because you live there. Your heart is in the community that you serve because you live there. So you have a little bit more, I don't want to say a little bit more at stake, but you, you're part of the community, you lived in the community, you're elected, you're there to serve the people. So I think you have a little bit more vested as an elected town clerk. But that's just my personal opinion.
I think you have a lot invested, especially if you're living in a community. And this happens with all municipal employees. And that's why a lot of towns, well, I didn't say most, I said sometimes, their police and their fire don't live in the same town. But there's also other reasons for that, too. It used to be in the old days, they all lived together, all in the same town.
Any other questions for Cheryl?
My only other question is related to equipment and technologies. Do you have any current or future needs?
No, we've done pretty good the past couple of years since I've been on board since April of twenty twenty-one, getting electronic voter checking at, at the polls. We're doing, we've invested a lot in software programs to provide efficient and, and great services for our townspeople. We've invested in new election tabulators. I have no capital requests. Currently, I'm in the middle of ordering new voting booths, but that's all paid for with a reimbursement that we've been holding on to and saving. So we're, we're, we're in, as far as my departments go, we're, we're pretty good for the foreseeable future. Thank you, thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
You're good, thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks.
All right, so the AC officer is not here, but we can take a quick look at the budget. Does that make sense? Just so we can be, you know, prepared for the next time. Two ninety-two?
I mean, I can put it on the next meeting if I think.
Yeah, maybe we'll just put it on the next meeting. That makes more sense.
Yes. We can look at it between then.
And now, should we do building? Come on down. So starting off with one ninety-two. One ninety-two. Sorry, doing something when I was talking.
I didn't pass that out, but you can.
I have it.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't have that, Carl.
Oh, yeah.
I have one ninety-two.
You should have one ninety-two.
If you take the time to print that out, we'll take it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I think it's missing a device somewhere. This is one ninety-two. But does it say one ninety-two? Am I crazy? It does.
This is a big budget.
All right, thank you. Let's take a minute and go through one ninety-two and then ask any questions we have.
This is a long one.
Yeah.
Carl, I like how, I like how you preference bigger building.
Bigger building, yes. We are growing.
Yeah, well, it's, it costs more money when you have a bigger building.
It does.
Things, you know.
Are we looking at all his budgets at once?
I just looked at one ninety-two. I didn't get to two forty-one yet. But we can do that.
Yeah, there's no shortage of line items for you.
Reading.
One ninety-two is really a necessity.
Yeah, there's not much weather on that.
Carl, while they're perusing through all these, I have a quick question on you. So the heating, right? Is that the new, new estimated budget for the heating for the, for town hall because of the new windows and everything else?
You hope that's going to decrease, yeah.
Nice little savings there. Eighty-seven to twenty-nine hundred? I'll take that. So just wanted to highlight that.
The town custodial part-time salary and wages is showing a big increase. Right, right on the first page, third line item down.
So they, that amount, they proposed my salary for the year. If approved, they'll still make me the lowest paid building commissioner in the area. Which, you know, it is what it is. I also do facilities, and I think we, we experienced, the bleeding is over. I think our budget was bleeding, this office, this building was bleeding. It was like a, I assumed it was a dyke, you put your finger in it, you know, so we'll, we'll be on there. And now we're at where we've created some policies, some preventive maintenance programs. So now we're going to hopefully see some of that saving. I think already this year, we're seeing a reduction in expenses maintaining this building. The floors are on right now. First time it's been cleaned in five years, but a professional steam cleaning committee and do these things. So we're at that point now. We're not, we're not fixing things, we're trying to ma- manage and maintain them now, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And the hard work you've done has definitely been appreciated.
Yeah.
I think we've all noticed it, so I just wanted to let you know that.
It's about liking the people you work with and liking the town you live in, and I certainly do both, absolutely.
Definitely a major difference. We took that over. We take that on, I should say, right? Plan in place, plan of action.
You might remember we were here last year asking for an additional fifty thousand dollars for this building because we just could, had to get a grasp on it. So we're beyond that point now. We hope to start saving money and then we're comfortable in here now. It's, we just found this morning, they found a leak, a pinhole leak in the refrigerant system. We're looking for two years. It's how difficult these things are. So we switched companies, so now we had better luck. So it takes time. We're getting there finally.
Yeah, Jared, I think you're talking about the part-time position we have.
Yeah.
So right now, and I don't want to jump on, Carl, but we, we had that in the budget. We haven't hired a part-time person, but we're getting to that point. We're sort of talking about it. So this would budget a part-time person at nineteen hours at the lowest rate that we have in the, in the, in the union. So it's sort of there. We, as a placeholder, we haven't, we've talked about it, we've been back and forth, and we're not sure, but, but at some point, we may need to do that. Because we're increasing the size of our buildings, right? Every building is getting bigger. Well, we only have one maintenance person other than, you know, Carl oversees the facilities, but we have one maintenance person who is the line above there. And there's, you know, it's, it's working fine, but when he's on vacation, or God forbid, he gets sick. So that's sort of a placeholder that we haven't utilized, but we've been putting it in there every year. And this year, I just made it comparable with the union in nineteen hours per week.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, no, I was just curious because it seemed like we'd done it a couple of years, showed no money, pulled from it, and then showed a big increase for this year. Now that you said that, it makes perfect sense and.
Excuse me. Other than the fire station, what buildings are getting bigger?
The COA, we added on the, the pod to the COA, and we built a vestibule.
The annex.
The maintenance for the COA, they don't have a separate budget for that? There's no line item for that?
Like, the cleaning products and the repairs and stuff are in this budget that you're looking at right now. We have one maintenance, and I'll let you speak, but we have one maintenance person that is responsible for doing all of the maintenance and cleaning on all of the buildings. And there's a lot more activity at the COA now, so there's a lot more demand there. Like I said, I'll let you, I don't want to step on.
So we've put different programs together. So preventive maintenance is going to save us money down the road. Little things that daily have to get done. Point of contact, you want to make sure that these things get cleaned, mirrors get cleaned. So we have come up with the, with the, we're working with each, each department head. COA, we came up with a plan, I think it's going to work better. Again, we're just asking my staff to do more with a little less, and we're, we're trying to hold that line. At some point, as I've mentioned, we can't. There's just no more hours in a day to do that. But we're trying to hold that money, that's why it's in there. Now, if we don't need it, fine, but at some point, we might have to tap into it.
And the annex. Was it something else that I hit there?
Have you looked into the point we might be advantageous to outsource some of this cleaning? I mean, you get people like them in steam trucks and.
So we, we do that now with this building here. We, we pay, I think, thirty thousand dollars a year to have a person do a few hours here, just here. We do that. Whatever we can do in-house, we try to do without outsourcing the work out. We try to keep it in-house. But we do have someone outsourced from here, but, but I think nine to twenty hours per, per week.
Okay. And what, and what does he do the rest of the time?
So he would do the, the heavier, deeper cleaning. You got gyms, you got cafeterias, dispatch, this room here. He'll do the, the weekly, but the daily, still need my guy to come in here and, and help, help them clean things up. Snow removal, grass removal, trimming and things like that. It all takes time. We're going into the season now, you have to, you look around the building, we get grass to trim. Highway Department does it with their mowers, but for them to get off, it takes time. So my guy comes in, trims and, and cleans the exterior of the building.
Do you and your staff have a, have a set schedule of what buildings you visit when during the week?
We do. So we just finished that with the, with the director from COA. We know she has certain programming during the day, so we get in there before they get to use it. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we do this. The odd days, we're at town hall, so we have all, we have the annex to take care of, transfer station, libraries, and these are old buildings. They're old buildings, so they need a lot of upkeep and, and caring for.
Can you speak to some of the challenges you have due to the age of the buildings?
Yeah, everything. I mean, cold, cold in the winter, heat in the summer. We, we've taken steps to remediate some of those problems, but we've got a long way to go. The town hall, we talked to Debbie about the cladding on it. It needs, it needs some attention. The roof's okay, but the cladding, it just was never done. It was just something that wasn't kept up, so now it's costing us more money and more time to make sure it's done. We got a schoolhouse next door. We just did a feasibility study, structurally how it is, so we got that money. We know what we need to do to make it viable again, but it all costs money and it takes time.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question about that. I, I know there's been some work going on in that old school. Do we have a plan of what we're doing with that long-term, that building?
I think we do now because we have a study from the structural engineer as to what we can and can't do.
Oh, okay.
We found out second floor and first floor, two different structural elements to it, so we're pretty much, we're trying to figure out how best to utilize that space.
Yeah, at one point, like, there was a conversation of, I mean, connecting it to the town hall for excess space. I mean, we definitely, we need as much space as we can get, and if we have a building right there, especially a beautiful historic building that we can utilize, we'd love to. But, you know, right now, it's not in any shape to be utilized, so.
And then it was, it was, that was the caveat of parking, right? We deal with parking issues. So we have more employees at town hall than we have parking spaces.
And then we have visitors.
And we have visitors and everything else. So that was part of the other issue, but we, you know, this is stuff that we, there was a study done a while ago about connecting the two buildings.
And the annex has helped quite a bit, as you're aware of.
Yeah.
People have accessibility to inspectional services, having parking, that, that's big. Now, it frees up parking spaces at town hall, which people also appreciate.
Yeah, and for, and for reference, that, that study, although a couple of years old, it was in the millions of dollars to connect both buildings and bring the other building up to ADA code, historical code and everything else. And you got zero parking as a benefit. There was zero additional parking because we don't own the land around it, so we'll do something with it, you know, what it is, what it looks like. That's to, that's, that's for the future. For right now, making sure it doesn't fall down is our main concern, right?
So it's been, it's been interesting year for us. We knocked down buildings, we brought buildings up, so we, we've done these things. And, and the town is, I think we're a better town for it. We get good comments from people. The COA improvement, and this all starts with the board and the leadership in town. Without your approval, nothing gets done. So the COA is what I like the most. We can see people enjoying themselves and going like this, saying thank you. And that's a big reflection on the town for what we're providing for our seniors. That's huge for me. I mean, they clear, the first day I got here, this is something just not acceptable, the way it was before. We need better, we can do better, and we have. And that's a, a good reflection on the town, I think.
Thank you.
What, have, how far have we gotten looking into what to do with the old police station, by the way?
I'll let Debbie answer that.
The old police station is, you know, home to the food pantry, and that's pretty much, that building is really not viable. I think we had a feasibility study on it because of the vermiculite that's in the walls. It's considered hot asbestos. So if we were to demolish that building, it would be extremely expensive. It's not really usable in its condition for office space for us, for the town to use. So I think it's used, it's in its best use right now, to be used as a food pantry a couple of days a week. I think that's the best use for it right now, and I think that the town people, you really utilize that pantry.
It's okay for food, but not for people.
That's the rub, right? That's the, well, we, we, we can joke about it, but you're, you're right. It is almost like a lapable situation because the study does say the vermiculite isn't suitable for offices and, and to be able to move it around and create new offices, but it's suitable enough for the storage of food, of the kind of food that they do have. So we're with you. We kind of chuckled that out as well, going, wait a minute, you could put food there, but you can't put people working there.
People, people are permanent, food's temporary.
So it's a, we're with you on that one. But like Debbie says, right now, it's the best use for is to provide, as a regional food pantry, to this, to, I think, I think the numbers were two hundred and eighty.
It was a hundred and sixty roughly families per week, if I remember correctly, what they came to us and said that are within town that are visiting weekly. So it's really a no-brainer to keep there, right? We have a hundred and six, that's a, it's not a one or two people within town who we say, you know, they're, this, there's a large pull on that from town. So, so, yeah, so.
Well, it's certainly a positive.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
No, Carl, I also want to say thank you. Working with, I know we took, once you came on board, we ramped up ownership and working with FES, Free Town Elementary School. So I know we, like, earlier, we discussed the stabilization fund and funding it, making sure they get what they need. A lot of that is working, you and Greg Goodwin, the facilities manager, working together as a team, making sure that we, we take our full responsibility for that, for that building as needed.
That's part of the preventive maintenance, that's been working on, on getting some photo imaging of what the roof looks like, what's insulation, what our leaks are, what our needs are. And not waiting till we have a big disaster there to, to, you know, to try to take care of it. We're taking small steps now to make sure we're okay in the end.
So we don't have to wreck down under the building.
Right, yeah. So kudos to that. I know that's an easy undertaking, so we appreciate it. I know Mr. Ward appreciates it, and the students and the teachers and everything else, so.
Thank you.
Keep it going.
Have you seen an uptick with the AUDs? Like, any, like, people pulling permits or anything of that nature?
What was that?
ADUs.
ADUs.
Yeah, so we got a reporting date of April twenty-fourth, so we'll have a hard numbers then. We are, we are by, by law to track them, we do track them.
Yeah.
We, we did some of the meetings we had. I think we had thirty people, sixty people, a big turnout, a lot of interest in town. That's going to be busy for the town and, and certainly my department and the Health Department. There's a lot of interest in it, so it's something we're, we're aware of. So we'll have that hard numbers on the twenty-fourth. How many ADUs do we already have for permits? And we have a lot, you know, I've gone out and meet with people, Health Department, Kevin's done the same thing. People are interested in finding out more about it, so there's a lot of interest right now.
Yeah.
I ju- I just want to bring up a point that Carl and I have been talking about, and we're not there yet. But one of the things is with these ADUs and with the common ownership and the ability to build more units, of course, his office is getting busier. And with the facilities being the way they are, it's a lot of work on, on his department and him. So, you know, we've had this conversation, like, there may come a time when we need to add a part-time inspectional person to help him, but we're not there yet. He's told me that we're not there yet, but I want to put that out there, that it's a conversation we are having internally.
Yeah. And do we do it at that point? Would we do it kind of like we do with electrical and plumbing and stuff, right?
Or we just do it? You want to bring another employee in?
Yeah, you don't bring an employee, pay him.
So just so you know, it might happen. I don't, we, like I said, we just have that, we have it every now and then, and I'm like, okay, Carl says he's okay.
We see it. I think the weather's breaking, people want to get out and stop building those porches, decks, ADU and additions and stuff and.
When people start seeing, oh, like, my neighbor, I didn't know you could build that, and then it's coming, coming waves, right?
Carlos might know a little bit of thing about that or not.
So there's nothing budgeted now, but you might see something, you might see us ask for more money at.
But we tried for inspections, so that would kind of.
Offset a little, yeah, that would be good.
But it's forward thinking, which we can all appreciate.
Yep. All right.
Actually, I have one question.
Yep.
This town properties, R and M Service Building and Grounds Police, forty-five thousand. Is that police details?
The repairs and maintenance for police department?
It says, yeah. It says, R and M Service Buildings and Grounds Police, forty-five thousand.
That would be the money for maintaining the building, snow removal, grass.
No, but it says police.
Yes, for this building.
This building, police department.
Okay. I thought it was overtime. We already had that.
Just for your maintenance for this building, which is expensive, when you build a.
Well, when you consider it's fifty-two thousand dollars for electricity, plus it's another twelve hundred dollars for electricity for the radio tower. It's a lot of money.
One thing Bobby brought from years past is solar on this building, and we have gone down that road. Is there any updates on that?
No, I mean, we're going to have to replace the roof, I think, because the roof is, is no good.
Yeah.
So.
So I guess the original plans for the roof were kind of flubbed, huh?
I, I don't think the roof plan was flawed. I think the contractor that installed the roof was flawed.
So last year, we ended up going up there and taking, all the nails were driven, overdriven. They either they popped or they sunk, and then the shingles went up, ended up and, and put whatever we could in it to keep that from happening. So knock on wood would have been okay. There was a problem. Either the gun wasn't sent right, there was no supervision, and then we got rain coming in.
Yeah.
It, it was prepped for solar, but because of the issues, we can't have solar on the roof.
So what are you saying? That the, what do you figure for longevity as far as the roof is concerned?
I think twenty years would be the max. I don't know where, where.
It was probably supposed to be a fifty-year roof, right?
Fifty-year roof.
I think it rhymes.
Yeah.
So if you've got leaks up there.
We already have leaks in it. I don't, I don't. We already have leaks in it. I don't, I don't have much confidence we'll be here for 50 years. I think technology would change, materials would change by then, so we keep an eye on it, you know, we, we make sure and.
Yeah, well, well, there's enough space up there. There's enough space for another police station up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we looked at, so, you know, we looked at the roof and as well as parking lot arrays as well, just to maximize the amount of electricity we could get from solar. It looked promising, but then when you look for, at the roof itself, it kind of, kind of killed the whole project.
They wouldn't do it.
Yeah, they wouldn't touch it.
Yeah, they wouldn't do it. They, one of the things was putting solar out in front of the building. No one wants to put, you know, we spent all the money on this building. We don't want to put a big solar array dead smack in the middle of the building. We talked, when it was done, it was over here, so, or some stuff for overparking.
What are you talking about? Somebody that had a problem aesthetically with the, with?
I'm saying aesthetically, who would want big solar array in the front area over there?
Whoever's paying the bill for the electricity would probably enjoy that.
Yeah, no, I think that that would, yeah, no. I'll kindly disagree that, that there's a lot of money that was spent on this building and the way it looks, that to save a little bit of money for the look would just, it wouldn't do anyone any favors.
Again, you know, I mean, a little bit of money, the roof's going to go 40 years, you know, and $52,000 is only going to increase because electricity's going up every year. I mean, you know, that's a big chunk of money.
Solar array on the roof is one thing. I'm talking about out in the front area over there, in the grass area.
He was saying, he was saying, in the front.
I, I understand your point, but I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's a police station. I mean, it's not supposed to look beautiful. It's just supposed to be functional.
Yeah, I meant to say that.
Yeah, they did give us different options, and once the option of the roof wasn't there anymore, it, I hate to say it, but died, died on the vine. Unless we fixed the roof, which was.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's, as you know, that's a whole different discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
By that time, you're going to have to strip it and reseal it and da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da, yeah.
Got it. We, so, you know, we did do the research, went down that rabbit hole of what to do next, and.
Yeah. I, I don't think that, in the initial plans that we saw, that I saw anyway, that anybody anticipated, you know, $50,000 for electricity. I mean, I think that they were, they were looking at anywhere between 18 and 22 or 26, something like that, they had maximum.
It's a high-energy-use building. Everything's electrical.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I understand that.
It's a.
Yeah. It's not just a bunch of fluorescent lights. I mean, it's everything else that's attached in the back over there.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of stuff is mandated.
It's hard to fix, you know, that's the other thing, too. They're not, you can't just send the flutrician or plumber to fix it. Somebody specialized in these systems, right, running systems.
Yeah.
It's computerized, so it's very expensive.
Look at the horror show with the HVAC, I mean. Really? You have to import somebody in order to fix it.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Nope.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Do we do, I think we did, I think we reviewed all of them, right?
241.
We did 241.
Everybody good with that one?
Yeah.
There isn't anything surprising there.
It was all pretty straightforward. So, do you guys want to, any other questions or concerns? Do you guys want to close your meetings? I have a public hearing I have to have next.
Anything else on our end?
You're going to, the schedule, you're going to come up with a schedule for upcoming meetings, and you're going to email them to us for the.
Yes, yes. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? All right. I call the meeting adjourned at 7:28.
Thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
Good seeing you, Carlos. Yeah. Don't worry, John, we have, it's in the budget for as many as you want for the full year.
$18,000, yeah, that's on a square foot for the, for patio space.
Yeah.
$1,500 a month.
You guys still around for more meeting?
$18,000 for the here-some-on. How much is that a square foot?
I have no idea. It's $1,500 a month.
Good, how are you doing? I can't complain. I have a kidney stone right now. I could complain, actually.
A year, that's what they're looking for.
It's off, $1,500 a month.
drank like a gallon of water in the last three hours, so.
As far as.
See you run out of here, you know why.
You should go look at it. We're already there.
I know you're there.
Go look at it.
All right.
I haven't looked at it. I used to get haircuts, too, but I know what it looks like inside.
Move some ass. Go look at it. I'll figure out the script.
I'll go look at it.
All right, so I'm going to read the public hearing notice. Verizon, New England, Inc., and N-Star Electric Company, DBA Eversource Energy requests permission to locate poles, wires, cables and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys and others, other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way or ways. Chase Road, install one JO midspan pole. I'm going to say a lot of words I don't know what they mean. On the east side of Chase Road, dash JOP 52 and a half, the new pole will be installed in line within, within approximately 30 feet of existing pole JOP 52 and approximately 101 feet north of existing pole JOP 53. The installation is being requested by Eversource to support new three-phase service to 89 Chase Road and provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunication and the transmission of high and low voltage electric current. Wherefore, they pray that after I do notice and hear, and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint and identical location for, for and permission to erect and maintain poles, wires and cables together with anchors, guys and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said pole to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with, here with, marked 1A7W5EB dated February 10th, 2025. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree that the space shall be reserved and maintained for the limited purpose of attaching one-way low-voltage wires and police wires owned by municipality or governmental entity for public safety purposes. A public hearing to discuss this, this request will be held on April 14th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Free Town Police Station Community Room, 15 Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass., East Freetown, Mass. 02717. Signed by the Freetown Board Selectmen. The public hearing is now open. And can you please state your name for the record, sir?
Michael Wallen-Gibbich. I'm here on behalf of Verizon. I'm a, work for a vendor of Verizon.
Okay. All right, let me figure out, think about where this is. 89 Chase Road.
And the JO, it means joint ownership for future, if that helps you in the future.
It does, thank you.
Is it Verizon and Eversource?
Correct.
Yep. Can you have it up on your computer?
Yeah, so it's, but it's, it's pretty zoomed in, so it's to a new home, it looks like.
Is this like right over here?
Yeah, I happened to drive by it on the way here.
Yeah. Is that the?
This is the only map I see.
Velozos, no?
Well, maybe. I'm not sure.
Not sure what his property number is. Let's see how, do we know the highway bond?
108 Proprietor's Way.
Okay.
Because it goes all the way through?
Yeah, because it's over there, but I don't, I don't know if that's the.
Yeah, based on your butters, I'm going to say that this is further down towards like the cranberry bog, like the turn over there.
This isn't to support, like, solar or anything?
Fortunately, they didn't give me that information. Basically, Eversource requested the order through Verizon, and Verizon, us being the vendor for them, asked us, can you, you know, we take care of easements and pull petitions for them.
All right. Just a lot of these that we get are usually solar field-related, so just asking.
I believe they said that it was to get power to 89 Chase Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it's, I'm assuming it's new house construction based on the way that that shows, it says it's a new home. I can try and pull this back so that you guys can see it.
Yeah.
You know. And then, based on your butters, you know, so I'm going to say that that's what I know for the line of a butters, it's, that's further down.
Any butters in the room? Hey, folks.
Oh, hi, everybody.
Yeah.
The pole is for something, but nobody knows the purpose.
Well, it says new home on it.
It says new home.
But Eversource does not give me a client name.
Okay, sorry. Three-phase is a built-to-house?
Apparently, apparently, unless they have a business out of there, they don't give me that type of information.
What does three-phase mean for the uneducated?
Basically, how many power lines are going to it up overhead, the primary lines, and drops down to secondary, which that usually goes to your home, so.
Okay.
Three-phase is usually used with un-heavy equipment.
Okay.
Things like grinders, shippers, things that I thought that would be extra power to get them moving. And I, I live at 87 Chase Road, and I'm just here because I'm trying to figure out what this means to me.
Yeah, fair. I'm trying to look in the map right here.
So, the property owner from 89 is not here, I assume, then?
No. Do we know, can we look on the GIS to see who owns 89?
I'm checking now.
It's.
Mellow?
Yeah, it's Mellow's property. It's the old, it's, you'll know the property. It's, all right, he chases old.
Oh, yeah. Interesting.
And so, I guess, you know, they bring up a valued concern in the fact that if they're doing three-phase, it's usually a heavier pole, right? Like, it, of power?
I don't think it's anything different than what's out on the road now. I think you have class ones and class, class twos out by the road, so I think it's in line. I don't think it's anything above and beyond, like what you see in high tension lines.
Okay.
So, so, you know, it could be that they would pull in the three-phase to go to a house, to, to a single family.
Or business. I, once again, they, they, they don't give us those details, except they get their request, and they just don't give us, unfortunately, the name. I'm not sure if it's a non-disclosure agreement or not.
Okay. And, like, can you see what that, that lot's zoned? Just out of curiosity, I mean, I don't. Next, maybe, I don't know.
I assume you guys have not received any orders for new development or solar farms, right?
It might not even go through this board, to be honest.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure.
Because usually it'd be something ahead of time. They wouldn't just say, let's build a, a grid to it, and we'll build it later on. It's usually the other way around.
Yeah.
And we, I haven't heard anything, I haven't seen it.
Why?
You would say, oh, okay, we're just going to put a pole here.
A bridge to nowhere.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
It says here for the. Oh, right, no, you, that's why we're asking the questions now, is have an opening discussion about this, is, talks here, it says, to provide distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and transmission of high and low voltage electric current. That's, that's what we have.
Yeah, I mean, the low current and telecommunications, obviously, the Verizon joint ownership part of it, and obviously the voltage, and the higher voltage is Eversource request.
Does it show in this big structure on that map?
Chapter 61A.
They're taking nobody from Eversource again.
61A is all.
Yeah.
It was all forestry land.
What's up?
I think she said 61A, which is all forestry land.
It said mixed, mixed commercial.
Mixed commercial, so if they're building a garage out there that's going to be servicing heavy-duty equipment and whatnot?
Yeah, which.
I can fantasize anything at this point, but.
Makes sense. If that's what the property's zoned for, I mean, I, you know.
Is that it? So, it's general use? Generally, it looks like it's general use zone, which means it can have business and.
Yeah.
And it looks like there is a kind, some kind of a garage on the back there, a garage type thing.
And do we know if there's been any kind of?
As the, as the neighbor, what's, do you know, you're 87, correct?
Yeah.
This is for 89. In general, how the neighbors, how are they?
I mean, for the most part, John's been okay with me and stuff. I mean, there's, there's issues. I mean, there are holes and stuff that we have to deal with on a regular basis. I mean, John has addressed them, but I mean, they're still there.
And from the, from the, from the cows, from the cattle, or no?
Dumping.
From dumping, okay.
Can you, can you look that up?
And shells, the seashells.
Yeah.
Let's not ignore the, the seashells and the seagulls that are all over the neighborhood and everything else.
You know, he's got a huge pool, most of them, and trucks to carry in the stuff, definitely things, you know?
Yeah.
I, I mean.
Is it people in the trailer back there?
At the same time, he's got a huge building back there. I don't know, ain't that, so I'm just.
Yeah.
I've heard that he's put in a machine to grind up pallets back there to constant loading box.
Yeah, like a gla, he has a glass thing, too, right? I'm not, I'm not sure exactly where it is, but I know he, like, he does the, like, glass recycling, right?
He does a lot of recycling back there. It's more like food and boots and stuff like that. I haven't seen so much on glass or anything.
I heard that's part of his plan. I don't know if it's going on.
Yeah.
I guess my biggest point would be, too, is like, deciding the plot, why does it have to be in his backyard? And right up front? You got hundreds of, you got, whatever the, you can see everybody. Why is it in our face?
Yeah.
And, and more plans to build more industrial, right, in our face.
I hear you. I mean, that, obviously, that's not this board, right? We can't control any of that part of this.
So, this is, this is the first step, or he already?
I, see, that's the thing I don't know. I don't know what, like, he probably has to do it all, and so, I'm not sure.
No butters have been informed.
Yeah, so that's surprising.
So, you would be informed, I mean, I don't.
We've never been.
So, you, so that would tell me that nothing. So, if it was a building of stuff, right, Debbie, you would have, Debbie knows more about this. She's forgotten more about it than I know. So, so, like this, when there was something that they want to construct, it's very mandated how many abutters and how far apart they have to notify, like this. So, if they were going to do another building, they would have to notify you to be able to go to the meetings for the permits and stuff, right? Debbie, I'm not misspeaking on anything.
It just happened. We can all hold the job there.
You can see it from Chase Road.
They put up a building right there, and never said anything.
Yeah, I'm not sure about what that building is and what it is in permitting, I don't, but I'm just saying that what, like, this is the prime example of, you know, certified abutters list, and they have to send everything off and prove to, to whoever, like, we have all the certifications that it's been sent to the abutters.
We don't have any signed butters letters, though.
We have the U.S. Postal Service certified receipts that we, for, for the abutters that received it, for this.
For this?
Yeah.
But yeah, and so that would go through.
Tracking.
What, planning?
Yeah, the, and I'm not sure what, what business or what he, he has back there, so it will depend. It would either be the zoning board of appeals or the planning board, maybe for a special permit. I'm not sure, cause I don't know what business he's running, but our zoning bylaws would certainly govern that and that would be, um, Carl Bizarro, who's the zoning enforcement officer. So that's a conversation to have with him in terms of, you know, what business they have back there and, and what permits have been pulled. It certainly wouldn't, like, the permits don't come through the selectman's office, so we don't have some of that firsthand knowledge. Luanne's trying to see if, she's going through the agendas to see if they've been on there for any, uh, permit. But other than that, which you could also do, look through the agendas for the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, I would reach out to Carl and talk to him, um, about what business is going on there and if there's, they're permitted for that. Or it could be a by right, depending on what's going on. It is zone general, which means that, you know, he can have some businesses in there. Look at our, our zoning, um, bylaws and see, like I said, I don't know what he's running for business, so I can't tell you. But it, that's where I would begin, is to, to look and call Carl and say, they're running a business, does it require a permit? And if so, it has, have they gotten that permit? It may be that they don't need a permit for whatever business they're running. So I, I, I can't answer any more than that.
Yep.
And then so, I, I fully understand your concerns, right? Like, I get where you guys come from. But I, I, you know, one, this is one thing we struggle with a lot in this board is I'm only, I'm only looking at what's in front of me and, and as long as all the boxes were checked and everything's been done right here, if I have no reason to say no to the, to, to what I'm being asked, right? I, I have to look at things kind of, um, alone.
Give them what we just said.
Yeah.
I understand what you said, but still, if you guys heard, hey, a abutters letter should have been sent out and they weren't, well, we better check into that.
Oh, no, I think we should check into that.
So before we just say, let's approve, why don't we?
Yeah. Yeah, no, yeah.
Well, this is good for us.
No. Yeah, I hear you.
We're telling you.
Do you care about your town residents and what?
We've not been notified.
But, but.
The stain and the, and everything, the trucking and everything that goes on. No, we're telling you, we have not been notified of anything. The activity keeps going and then here comes the war and you're like, well, we have to do it because this is what's in front of us. You guys should go to the building department and say.
Exactly.
Hey, no notices have been given out to, to our neighbors. That's what, you guys should be saying, as a selectman.
Yeah.
Why, why, why no notices?
No, and, and I have no problem. We can, we can continue this hearing, right? Uh, that's, that's totally fine until we get more information. Um, and I, I would, it would be also nice to have somebody who, representing the property be here, right? So. Um, yeah, and, and at the same time, like, I think we're assuming, it, it, it seems from what we're, the paperwork we got, it is to service eighty-nine, right? But you, but we don't know, like, we're making that assumption.
We don't.
Yeah, cause my order came, the, the actual order from Verizon came over from EverSource as the client.
Yeah.
So that's what makes it awkward, yes, cause the, the order gets.
My point is, uh, Verizon, I guess, is, when the letter is asked, like, permission to, for my property and stuff, there's nothing going into my property, right?
No, no, cause it's all in the public right away, the utility right away, so that's why it gets presented to the town.
Yeah.
Because along each side of the road, there is a utility right away, X amount of feet from the, you know, edge of the pavement or center of the road. So that's why, why you get notified as a abutters. Now, if, if it was gonna be dropped onto his property, there'd be no abutters letters, it would be just a private easement. And, and it would just be recorded at the registry deeds and you would, you know, sign a document and a sketch. But because it's out by the public, you know, right away, it gets presented to the town and all you abutters were notified.
And again, my interest here was just to know what was going on there, you know, because of the way the letter was.
Totally understand. May, it makes sense.
And, uh, not, not that it has anything to do with this particular thing, but, um, you know, they moved, uh, poles, one of them poles, ten feet, you know, maybe fifteen years ago, forward. Ever since, I've listened to the wires slap the side of my house and I've had people look at it and stop and they're like, oh, no problem.
No, is that, is that pole on your property or number eighty-nine?
It's out front. It, it's on the road. But again, they moved, they, my wires were fine. They moved the pole forward. Basically because of Holly Ridge, I would assume, put a guy wire down in my lawn and now I listen to the wi, wires hit my house and I've got a mole around this guy wire, which, you know, the guy wire don't bother me so much, but when the, when the wires hit the house, like, where you sleep, it, you know, and again, it's nothing to do with this right here. I just wanna make sure that something else ain't happening that's gonna cause more problems.
Is it a power line hitting the house or a telephone line come, hit the house?
Power line that comes into my house.
So. You should notify EverSource and ask them.
I've had EverSource there looking at it and they're like, no more motherfucker. It still does cause a problem because it hits my house.
Sounds like a problem.
I get it. And of course, you're, you know, I drove by there on the lake here, there's not many trees around there, so you're getting all the wind anyway, constant, so I can only imagine. I'm sorry.
Again, I, I, my concern was, you know, I know basically where this pole is going because I've seen the stakes put up and somebody keeps knocking them down. It ain't me.
I feel about as if there was any stakes. I didn't see any. I took some photos.
There's two white stakes laying on the ground right there because they put them up several times and somebody knocks them down, but it ain't me. Um, and there's a cone right there that's basically where the.
I saw the cone, yeah, yeah.
I, I'm assuming by what the letter said, I, I assume that's pretty much the fault. I have no other reason to understand why the stakes keep this, because property runs a little curve this way, you know?
Thanks.
So, well, I mean, um, again, that was my major concern, the question here was, maybe it was, that was going through my property.
Totally understand.
So I think what makes sense is, there's obviously a lot of unknowns here. Is if we continue this and try to get some more information on what's happening, reach out to John to come or have a representative come here to explain why they want, what they're doing and, and just make sure that everything's going through. You know, I know that this is, it's a kind of a strange situation that this particular request does flow through the board of selectmen, um, but we deal with these all the time. Um, but yeah, just the, the overall kind of plans with this property and what's going on. Um, I'd like, I think we need some more information on that. So I think I need a specific date and time to, uh, continue this too.
And I was gonna let you know, the, you know, the relationship of EverSource and Verizon is, they joint own the poles, but they, EverSource has an arrangement that Verizon secures easements or pole petitions and set the poles.
Yeah.
And actually place it for them. Yeah, it's kind of a.
It would be opposite.
Strange sibling type of thing, like, but, but that's, that's the, the odd part to all this as well.
We're not trying to stop you from doing your work or anybody.
No, I understand. Everybody has a valid, uh.
You can see, our, our residents have some, some questions and we're gonna get them first before we can move forward. And, and so, and so, you know, off topic, as far as dealing with that property and the, the things you brought up, that has come up to the board of health and my other hat, and we, we are doing a site visit to look at it in the very near future, working with John and the property to, to alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns and see what we can do. The, the, that individual does wanna work with the town and the neighbors to see what can be done to help alleviate some of the issues that you brought up today. So I know that for a fact. I spoke to them personally. Uh, they know this was the property we're talking about, but, um, for this purpose, for today's meeting, yes, I think kicking it down the road and seeing, getting more information is the, the most appropriate thing to do.
Small town stuff, he's also on the board of health, so.
Hey, it's funny, I was gonna tell everybody, well, maybe we should speak to, so that works out well.
Yeah, yeah. There, there's this, there's discussions being had in background to help, to help.
I'm just worried.
Whether, uh, through the board of health, others, uh, come, neighbors have come forth with similar, um, not, I hate to say issues, but similar, um, concerns with the property as far as smells and seagulls and things like that, so that has occurred in the board of health. So we are aware of it. Um, it's more of a board of health's issue to try to rectify than a board of selectmen on tho, on those issues. As far as the polls concerned, definitely our, our, in our purview, I think the decisions to be made to kind of, let's see what, what we're doing here first before we, we move forward.
Alright, so I'm gonna continue this till, uh, May fifth, uh, twenty twenty-five at seven PM. That's the date we're going with, so I'll attend a motion to, does it, to that as a motion? I think so.
Yeah.
I'll attend a motion to continue this hearing, uh, till May fifth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so motion's been continued, so we can move on?
So is it our responsibility to, to?
So, yeah, let's talk, good, good question. Um.
I can reach out to Carl.
Yeah.
I, I know that there's been complaints about the, um, the seagulls and that's been pushed through to the departments and they are working on that, but I'll also talk to him about what's operating back there and if he has any information.
And. So I guess, well, we can get to the bottom of that. I think that's a good question. So we'll have to find out, should abutters have been notified based on the constr, on the, on the, and Carl will be able to answer that. There's a chance here, right, that, that they, they didn't need to, right? That is a possibility. I'm not saying that's fair or right, but that, that, like legally, there might be a, a possibility that because of the, the way that the, the property is zoned and what they, and what they built, that they don't need to, they don't need to, right? So, but we'll, we'll have answers on that and figure out whether they should have have and didn't, or they didn't need to and that's why they didn't. So. We should have that by, by May fifth, right? That should, that should be an issue.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, um, Carl Bizarro to look into it and that's all I can do, but we'll see what he can find out and maybe speak to Mr. Mellow.
Yeah, this makes, this also, on the abutters list, it does say three hundred feet, so I'm assuming that has, anybody within three hundred feet of that property is probably, cause there's ten people on this list that looks like they've got, we got receipts for from certified mail. So if you're three hundred and one feet, does that mean you got excluded from that list?
Yes.
Well, yeah, but like, I mean, so, this, the same group, if they need to abut for the construction, right, or to go through that whole process of, of getting the permits, right? Or getting approval for it, like, the, the same people who got this should have gotten that one, right? That's what I'm saying. So.
We'll clean that up and.
It's obvious, right?
Get more information out to you folks.
Absolutely.
And is that for seven PM on May?
Yeah, same thing.
Think of the mile, so I can.
Margaritas will. I'm not judging.
I don't like salt in my rim, just, just in case.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, thank you. Okay. So now we have the annual town meeting. I'm not gonna make it. It's been a long day.
I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna make it.
Alright, so I gotta find my personal agenda. Is that my, this looks like my, we have very similar doodles that make no sense. I got it, I got it, I got it. Okay, so moving back to agenda item three, review and remove articles for, we did the special town meeting, now we're gonna do the annual town meeting? Um, okay, let's try to go through these efficiently as possible.
I actually thought it was more than what it actually is, so that's good.
Okay, yeah, article one. This is.
Sorry, on with this?
Um, yeah, just for the budget, right?
Yeah.
Any questions or concerns? We don't know what that money is yet necessarily?
Yeah, no, good.
Okay. Article two, salary compensation for elected officials, probably didn't change or maybe changed a little bit?
Well, yeah, that will.
That'll be the one.
Highway surveyor, you're right, you're right, you're right, okay.
Highway surveyor and charles, those are highlighted technically. You're just not seeing that on yours, but those I can fill in. I'll fill in what their request was and then we'll see what the FinCom recommends.
Alright.
Very standard, we do this every year.
Yep. Next article, capital request to fund repairs, uh, for fire hydrants. We don't know the money yet.
Um, it's seventy-five thousand, but I'm going to request they remove it because they already got an article last year and they haven't spent the money. So, um, we're gonna leave it there to pass through, but if I talk to them and they're fine with the money that they have, I don't think they realize they have money.
Yep.
They're, they might not need that, so it might get removed, but as of today, we'll leave it and push it through.
Okay.
In case they need it.
Alright, agenda item, or, sorry, the next article, amend the town free town zoning map. This is.
This is the MBTA.
MBTA.
Yeah, we need to make sure that's clear.
We need to push that, you know, it needs to go to town meeting.
Yep.
Uh, we're working on that with Nancy, um, pretty much the same as it was the last time. Trying to streamline it maybe a little bit more, like, like we don't need to necessarily change the name of the PMA, we do, there, there's no need. So let's just do what we have to do, which is request a change in the zoning.
Yep. Alright, next one is.
Hold on, hold on, Trevor, uh, bef, for this one, for the MBTA one, should we not include a second article, maybe even third article as well? Second article potentially being what we have currently, the center of state, say, hey, the first article was rejected by the, if it's, if it's rejected.
Well, we already have it, so I don't know that we would need an article to resend what we already have.
Well, the article say, hey, we're gonna send this instead. Instead of the one that they want for three A at sixteen to one, we send what we have in place now, eight to one. And then if, and then have a third article to say, hey, if we don't do this, what's our next step? Do we put money aside for potential litigation? Just to be prepared.
Do we need an article though to send it off to?
I don't know, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
You don't need an article for that and even if you, and if you choose to litigate it, you don't need an article.
Okay, perfect. Let's make sure we have those options and we.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I get it, I do, yeah.
We could always do it on the fall town meeting if you wanted to bring it before the people, if you thought it would get to that cost.
Well, it's, it's, it's July, what, July fifteenth deadline?
Yeah.
Right? So. Just trying to be prudent and make sure we, we have everything, all our eggs in the basket in case we do have to go down that route. Not that I want to, but we don't, we don't control that. So. Food for thought.
Yeah. Alright, next is budget for the water sewer enterprise fund.
Same article we do every year. They just give us updated numbers.
Uh, s, next article, spending limits for assorted revolving funds.
Same article every year, just up, I don't know that, I mean, those numbers have been updated. I'm not sure if they differ from the prior year, but those are the updated numbers.
Nothing crazy.
Vaccine one went up, I think, a thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanna say, everything else was flat, maybe community program, I don't know.
Okay. Alright, next article, accepted veterans additional tax benefit. It's a, for double the amount of real estate tax relief allowed to certain disabled veterans under MGL chapter fifty-nine, section five, blah, 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 blah.
It just gives an additional benefit to veterans. It does come out of our tax, uh, dollars, just so you know, whereas other things, um, don't. But this is coming from the assessors and it's also been asked about by, you know, Bob Kovekka for the Veterans Association. So it's, it'll be helpful to those disabled vets. I wanna say it's two thousand dollars or something.
So depending on which one it is, so twenty-two, the, the, each one of those twenty-twos are a different rating you receive from the Veterans Affairs and then you get a certain amount of dollars off.
Percentage disabled?
Correct. Well, not, yeah, percentage disabled and a percentage what you receive, let's say you get a Purple Heart.
Yeah.
That's like twenty-two A, I believe, and that's four hundred dollars off your abatement a year. I believe this article is saying to, do we double, do we match it, right? Cause we get seventy-five percent back from the state. So the state will give us back four hundred, seven, seventy-five percent of the four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Right? So we get, we are on the hook for twenty-five. So this article, it looks like it says, are we gonna match it? Are we gonna tear it? Are, are we gonna do a four percent match or are we, do we plan on doing what some other towns have done or plan on doing? Doing like a tiered approach? Do we pay, do we do fifty percent of that match or seventy-five percent of the match? So that's some of the math we have to kind of figure out before we, as it, as it reads now. And, and the, and so you know, the MGL fifty-nine, it does give you two examples of what to write in your article. So this is a little bit, a little different, but.
Yeah, so it's a little bit weird because you're saying, based on that, like, okay, so you said four hundred dollars, so right now, we're gonna pay, we're paying a hundred, they're giving us three hundred, but this makes it sound like we're gonna go from four hundred to eight hundred.
Correct.
We would then be on the hook of five hundred and they'll still give us the three.
Yes.
Correct, and the, in the, right.
It's, it's, it's town funded as opposed to the other stuff, but at that, um, is that anything that would be affected by non-compliance with MBTA? Is that like monies they can bring back or no? No, I don't think so.
There's, there's about a hundred and twenty families throughout the town that get, about a, how about a similar, a hundred and twenty veteran families that receive some sort of an abatement or, or could receive a disorder of abatement, right? Cause the, the Heroes Act changed the way the law speaks to it, right? Um, so now you can give back more to the veterans, but then again, the absorption is through the other taxpayers in town as well. So let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna abate, which is a phenomenal thing and I think, let's do it. That's also a hundred thousand dollars that's gonna be absorbed by the other ninety-two hundred taxpayers. It doesn't go away. It, it still comes out of tax funding, you just, so, again, actually, I think we just need to add a little bit more beefy language to it so they're all aware.
Okay.
You want me to add, you want me to increase the explanation of the article?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that, I, I agree, I agree with that. I think we have consensus on that. That makes sense.
And on the Heroes Act, at, right at the bottom, it gives you the couple of examples of how to write it and everything else, so maybe we can piggyback off of that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good call, I think.
Yep. Next article here, fund, purchase of land, this should be fun. Uh, so this is for the, see if the town will vote to transfer from stabilization fund amount of two million four hundred, uh, four hundred sixty thousand dollars, uh, to purchase the land. So we know what this is.
Yeah, I mean, the timing of this article, you know, I've been back and forth, do we put it on this meeting, we put it on the fall meeting? But I, I, and I, I don't know that I have a real strong propensity to either one. It's sort of, but if the town taxpayers don't wanna fund the purchase.
Might as well know sooner than later.
Yeah, I think we, we might wanna know sooner or later. I don't have a hundred percent of all of the engineering stuff done, but we're headed in that direction, so I'm not sure. So that's something that I wanted to ask the board. Do you wanna push this to October?
I think we just, we just bring everybody out and.
Can we bring it back up again at another meeting, right? So, because here's my issue, is you're gonna get people, we're gonna, just before this, we're gonna talk about zoning and people are gonna say, well, if we don't do this, we're gonna lose funding and it's gonna hurt us. And then a couple of articles later, we're like, hey, give us two point five million dollars to purchase this land. It's, it sounds crazy, but it's, as we talk about as a board, it's a hundred percent needed, right? So, um, but I just worry about, to your point, timing. But if, if it doesn't pass this time and then things change down the road, then the next meeting, we can bring it back again.
Yes.
Then I'm okay with it. It's not a one and done. Then I'm okay with it, it's not a one and done.
You know, and I think it's, you know, like I said, if they don't want to fund it, then we need to know that.
Yeah, that way we don't continue to work at it, right, so you're wasting, you would be wasting.
So we'll leave it on this, this form.
All right, next article, maintenance of veterans graves, I don't think we have any concerns with that, right?
No.
Maintenance, various cemeteries, ask for ten thousand dollars here.
I just want to shout out to Mike McHugh, just, just so you know, he does all of this stuff for the cemetery commission as a volunteer, and he keeps those cemeteries looking good.
Yeah.
And he does a lot of work, I don't think people realize how much work that he does for the cemeteries, and we would be, it'd be a detriment if we, if he didn't continue to do that on the cemetery commission and, and the cemetery commission as a whole, but just, just a shout out to Mike McHugh for all that he does.
Yeah, no, he does a lot for the town, lots of different ways. Okay, financing board of health betterments, next article.
This came from the Board of Health, and I'm gonna, you know, it's gonna go to town council for review, but this is basically the program that if you need a new septic system and you can't afford it, you can apply to the town for assistance with that, and not that the town pays for it, but we sort of.
Finance it?
Yeah, so this, I believe this is this article, even though it's difficult to read.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what it's for.
Right, we already have betterments for septic, so.
We do, but Kevin said we were running out of money.
Right, we're re-upping it.
You might know, yeah.
Yeah, we're just adding more, more money back into it so that we can do more, I think we're at like, I'm gonna say thirty-eight thousand dollars or something like that, and then you need certain amount to be able to do more than just one septic at a time.
Yeah.
Is there a dollar value in here?
So I was gonna say, is there a dollar value that you guys are trying to, to go for?
Yeah.
We have to add a dollar value.
With that, yeah, I can see it here.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, I know we'll talk about it on Wednesday, two days from now, so I'll have a better idea Wednesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. All right, next article, it's asking for eighty-two thousand dollars for the purchase of a new town vehicle for the water and sewer commission.
Yeah, they need a truck, that should come out of the water and sewer.
Revolving fund?
Yeah, their fund.
Cool. Next article, authorize Board of Health to expend opioid settlement funds, we have twenty-three grand to spend, can we want to spend that on?
So it's in a stabilization fund, and then in order for them to be able to spend it, we need to move it out of that stabilization fund and give them authorization to spend it, I don't know that they have a spending plan necessarily, but they've been working a lot with Cavalry Cares because, you know, that's, she does a lot of intervention for the drug stuff. So I, I know that they might have specific plans, I don't know, again, Carlos might have more information on that because he's on that board, but it's just basically a veh- a vehicle to make it available to them to then spend, and they're, they're restricted in what they can spend it on, ba- based on this Massachusetts.
Has to be probably drug, substance related or.
Yeah, there's a checklist for everything, we, every, for every petty, we have to make sure there's a checklist of, does it meet this criteria or not, so, and Cavalry Care does do, does check a lot of those boxes, which, which is great.
So, yeah, so it gives them an avenue to spend the money because it's not doing us any good just sitting there at this point, right, that's not the intent of it.
I don't know if people realize we have that resource too with Cavalry, Cavalry Cares, if you have an issue, you can go there and Reverend Dias will point you in the right direction and get you some help.
Yep, absolutely. All right, next article is actors, active shooting, shooter training for the police and fire for eighteen thousand four hundred and five, that seems.
Yeah, this is one of those things that we just pulled out of the budget and identified it separately because it's expensive, but I think it's very imperative that the police continue to do this.
Absolutely.
So I thought, let's put it to the voters and let them.
Not a, not a shoulda, coulda, woulda thing, and we, and we've seen how these things have happened in the news where police forces, and they weren't prepared, right, and so I, I, I think this makes a lot of sense for a position to, and then highlight that, show it is expensive, but it's very important. All right, next one here, transfer funds into conservation land fund, so this is to transfer thirty thousand dollars to be out of the conservation land fund, out of general, no?
No, yes, they just want, they just want money just in case, which, you know, that always bothers me as a, as a.
They want, they want, if the opportunity presents itself, they want to be able to have the flexibility to jump on it.
Don't know how much money they have in their fund right now.
Is their fund like well invested, like, or is it like in some kind of, is it?
No, I don't, I, I don't think it is, I'd have to look at what it's, what it is, I'd have to look at, it's like a sundry fund, I don't think, I mean, we're very good, we're all over those funds and we have invested them, and you know, you know, we've done well with them, but I'm not sure on this, this fund, I'd have to check with Patty and Matt.
But to purchase the land regardless if they have the money, they still have to go to town floor, right, to be able to purchase the land, so even if they put it in their coffers, no?
I think, I think if it goes right into conservation, right?
I think conservation can do it and historical, I think of the two that can do it without town meeting vote.
Well, I mean, the, here's the caveat I'm gonna say is it's only thirty thousand dollars, so where can you buy much land for thirty thousand dollars?
But I, I think, I think what they're, I'm assuming it's been, they adding thirty thousand every year for the last ten years, right, and then you hopefully, you, you actually can buy something, whereas like other towns do, like a percentage of every sale goes into the conservation, like trust, right?
And then we have the citizens.
I'm okay with it, because I, I don't want to, to not have the money there, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, thirty, I, I think it's, I think it's worth putting it up, you know, I, I even recommend it for the town to vote, I do think it makes sense. But I, I would, I mean, I am curious of how much money they have, and that might be something that should be in the, in the explanation of the article.
Yeah, I'll add that, I don't know how much they have, I don't think they have a whole.
I don't think they have much, from recollection, I think they, I think from talking about this a while back, it was, they have money in the fund, but the cost of land has gone up.
Yeah.
Right, so they need, they want more money in case something does come up, that they can actually afford like the full parcel acre versus the quarter acre that they can afford.
Yeah, a, a, a empty lot can go for over a hundred grand, no problem right now, you know.
And I'm gonna say they have around a hundred grand if that, if I recall, but I'll find out.
Okay. All right, next article, this is the recall provision for the school district.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Uh, we know what that's about, we're good there.
Yep.
Next article, citizens' petition, recording finance committee meeting, recording finance meeting, so this is citizens' petition.
So there's nothing you can do about them.
So they want to record all the finance committee meetings?
Yeah.
I agree.
Welcome to our, our world, fantastic, all right.
Follow by the next one.
And then we are recording all this selectman meeting, so that's not a problem?
Well, I think because right now they're looking at it as if we had our meeting at town hall and we didn't have, you know, the camera guy here, they want cameras on every meeting that the three of us.
Got it.
So.
So, make, so make that a bylaw, right, or something of that nature that has to be recorded.
I don't know what they're trying to do, it has to go to Attorney General, I'm not sure that it will pass.
Yeah, I feel like it's, as long as we don't violate the open meeting law, I feel like it's, I think it's good, like we make every effort to record meetings and put, and put them out there, but there are certain situations where it just, it's not practical, right, but that's okay, we'll see what happens. Next one, doesn't matter, but it's. Citizens' petition, conservation to purchase land. Richmond Road.
Kind of caveats with what we take on the article we just talked about.
I wonder if they need thirty thousand dollars, I wonder, I wonder if they have a hundred thousand.
No, one came in as a petition and the other one is through the conservation, I'm not sure why this didn't go through conservation, I'm not sure if the conservation said no, I don't know. I know that whoever owns this land is donating some of the land to the town, and then this is the residual piece and selling it to the, to the town for this amount of money, so.
Why the citizens' positions, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, and the next one, so we have the sidewalk on North Main Street, so two hundred and fifty grand for that.
Yes, that's a citizens' petition, nothing you can do about it.
Nothing we do about it.
Personnel bylaw, that's a placeholder, I'll get it to you, this is, so as the personnel bylaws, as they're written now, everything that you do in the personnel bylaw has to go to town meeting. The new bylaw will just push the authority back to the selectmen, so if you want to change the number of vacation weeks the bylaw employees get, you, you as a board, through a process can do that. It doesn't have to go to town meeting floor every time a change gets made to the bylaw employees. If you want to add a position to the town, you don't have to go to a town meeting and add the position, you can do it through a, it's like gonna have a public hearing, so we're drafting this new bylaw that will actually push the authority for you to make changes back to the board.
Okay, sounds fair, all good. All right, next article, solar pilot agreement, so we don't know if we need this one yet.
Yeah, and that's a placeholder for the assessors.
All right, I think that's it.
That's it, are you guys okay with us sending those all through?
I'm good, everyone good?
Yeah.
All right, so let me just make a motion, if I can find my, that's it, yep, so I'll attend a motion to approve the, I guess, pro, wow, let me start over. I'll attend a motion to authorize the town minister to send the annual town meeting with the notes we've made to town council for review.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're not gonna do the budget, the, uh, sorry, the audit, right?
We just, I did that earlier, right, I explained to you.
You did, you talked about it, yeah, I, I, that's enough, I just didn't know if there was like a more formal presentation.
No, that was that you have it in your pocket, like the letter that came from the auditors.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I told you to do a shout out to Matt, but he's not here.
So we were, we're gonna sign and then we'll adjourn. And I need to go to bed soon.
This thing is gonna be.
We're gonna days you used to go to the end now, right?
Yeah, that's long gone. Another one there? Starting to get it over. Wow. Okay. And, with that, I'll attend a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.